Good evening. It being five minutes after 6:00 p.m. on Tuesday, September 14th, 2021, I hereby call this meeting of the Westboro Select Board to order. We have a full agenda this evening. I know that Westboro TV has been rotating on the screen, so hopefully people are familiar with it. For people here in the room with us this evening, there are copies in the tray at the front of the desk. Normally start these meetings, if you're willing and able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Posted on the agenda, which Westboro TV has been scrolling, as well as on the town website, are a list of openings on town boards and committees. As we've talked about at several meetings, throughout the town, there are almost 400 positions for volunteers on various boards and committees. These boards and committees are instrumental to the operation and well-being of our town and our citizens, our residents, our businesses. If you have an interest in participating in town affairs in any way, shape, or form, please reach out, let us know. We are happy to help match you to one of the available openings or other opportunities that exist. So please take a moment, visit the town website, watch Westboro TV, and find the opportunity that matches your interest and step forward. We welcome anyone who's willing and able to serve, and we appreciate the efforts of our volunteers. At this point, next item on the agenda is open forum. And so I will ask if there's anyone in the audience who is here present this evening for open forum? Yes, we have one person present, so please step forward. Reminder that open forum is a chance for the Select Board to hear information from residents on issues of concern to them. We ask that you keep your remarks to approximately three minutes or so. The board may or may not respond, or we may just take it under advisement for future consideration or future action. So thank you. Please give us your name and address for the record as well.
Diane For, 6 Robin Road.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay. Mine is a follow-up about the body-worn cameras that the police are looking into. And it's a question that I raised about having open forum, actually, a public forum, to talk before the town meeting where we have it on the warrant about that proposed program. And I'm just raising it today because I have not heard back. I raised the question of having such a series, actually, it was a series of open forums for the public to have a chance to know how the cameras work, because they were still in the process of learning about it at last. Springs Town Meeting and its subsequent presentation that I went to at the Diversity and Inclusion Committee. And because we had a large turnout for the protest, or whatever you want to call it, in the spring, we knew there was concern in the community about police and police reform and transparency and community policing issues, all of which the chief is very good and open about. So anyway, I'm raising it today. I know the chief of police is coming, so maybe he'll even speak to the issue a little bit, that there'll be a chance before we vote a major expenditure of a person who has to deal with the archives, the digital archives of this program. I'd like to have a chance for the community to talk more now that the police hopefully understand better how the system works. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at open forum? Okay, not seeing anyone. Our next item on the agenda is a discussion vote to execute a community services agreement with Massachusetts General Brigham. And we have someone joining from MGB remotely?
She's just getting on.
Okay, great.
John, do you want to come up?
So, would you like me to make the intro?
I was just waiting for her to get on so she could hear the...
Okay.
I guess I can. Oh, no. All right, it's still connecting, so we can just start. Keeps going away, keeps saying it's connecting and then it's not. So this is a request for the board... This is a request for the board to vote to approve and execute a community services agreement with Massachusetts General Brigham. As we've talked about previously, Massachusetts General Brigham is interested in locating in Westboro. They've actually already gone through their site plan process with the planning board, which was approved at the beginning of July. And so we have been working with Massachusetts General Brigham since they told us of their interest in coming here on a community services agreement, also referred to as a pilot agreement or a payment in lieu of taxes. Being a nonprofit, they don't have a requirement to pay taxes, and so they've been a really great partner in working with the town in creating our first community services agreement. So we worked closely with the chief assessor, Ian, as your Select Board representative, myself, and the finance director have worked very closely with Robin Berry and their team at Massachusetts General Brigham to put together what we think is a really fair community services agreement. It's a 20-year term, and so there's a payment each year with an escalator. And the agreement calls for renegotiation as we come to the end of that term, for a subsequent term. It also calls for, if there's a transfer of the property to another nonprofit, that the initial term of that agreement would be carried through in the transfer of that property. So John has brought this to the Board of Assessors, who have voted to recommend it to you. And then, like I said, we've been working really closely with Massachusetts General. So Robin Berry is here. Just want to... So John, I don't know if you want to speak to this while I get Robin all set.
The Board of Assessors is very supportive of this. They were supportive of the process, obviously relative to removing value from the taxable town rolls. Anytime that there's opportunity to get some payment in lieu of that, it's a benefit. There are other incidental benefits, which I believe you have discussed ad nauseam. So an opportunity to get some payment. It was important that the town be protected going forward in the event of a sale of the property, as well as as this term expires, and I think we were successful in doing that. And so we felt pretty good about it.
Okay, great. I will open it up to questions from the board as Ms. Berry continues to deal with the technology and join the meeting. If there are any questions for John?
A couple.
Couple, Shelby?
Sure. So Kristi, if you would please, I think for the public's benefit and the board, can you explain what happens to the funds once they are... So we've signed this, MGB comes here. How does the money get routed, and who sort of, so to speak, kind of controls it, if you will?
Yeah, so it's just a general fund revenue, so it would just come into the general fund. And so, you know, like all the other revenues that we have, you know, as those increase, it reduces the amount of money that we need to raise on the taxes.
So they're not allocated to a specific project, just comes into the general fund?
Correct.
Great. I don't know if this question is for you, Kristi, or John, or Ian, but I'm curious to know, being that this is our first agreement, are there comparisons that we looked at? You know, my short question is, how do we know we're getting a good deal?
Sure. Well, we looked at a lot of different communities and the way their deals, their agreements were structured. This one is structured very similarly. One of the differences here, this is a very unique property for Westboro. We don't have anything like it. So in terms of looking at what it would prospectively be valued, it's a little bit more of a challenge. And so what I did is I tried to take a step back and look also, not just at the agreements in other towns, but at how they were valuing their property. And that made a difference relative to the improvements that are there and what the potential, you know, total true value in the market could be based upon use. And then working with Massachusetts General Brigham, you know, coming up with a comparable approach, they were really focused on comparables within the community. And obviously, if we don't have any other similar surgical centers, how do you do that? And I think the consensus was, was a proportional contributory tax amount. So looking at other properties that would be generally similar, office buildings potentially that were generally similar if it wasn't for the special use, what are they paying per square foot? And so we went through the town and we looked at properties that we thought would be comparable in value, and that's where this came from. And on average, basically of those, and we looked at it from a couple of different iterations relative to single tenant occupancy, you know, what it's being used for, size ratio made a big difference, and how old the buildings were.
Thank you. That's all.
Any other questions from other members of the board?
Ian just got one.
Patrick.
Shelby, you asked one of my questions. The other question I had was, how did we come to the 2.5% increment on the... I forget the term you used.
Escalator.
Escalator.
Escalator, okay. How did that come to be?
It's a frequently used amount as an escalator. I could only think of proposition two and a half, you know, two and a half less half of five.
Well, I think I also was looking at other agreements that John said, as we looked at, it's a pretty common one to use. It's if the... I think we also looked at, you know, the federal government targeting a 2% inflation rate to two and a half, it kind of fit in that range of kind of what... Who knows what's inflation? They target 2%, it could be more, it could be less, but that kind of fit into that range of kind of a inflation escalator.
It was the most commonly found number out there. I don't know if I even found another one.
Okay, thank you. Ian?
No, no questions. Again, I was part of the team, and I just, as you said, it's, you know, a number of meetings, both internal on our side, but also with the folks, Robin and her team, and say it was a good working relationship, some disagreements, but we got through them in a constructive manner. So I do appreciate all their work, and hopefully the board will support this. I do think it's a fair agreement for the town.
Okay, thank you. And I guess my one question is, this is our first community service agreement or payment in lieu of taxes agreement. Are you comfortable that this provides a good template for future agreements with other nonprofit organizations who may move into town?
I'm very comfortable with it, as is the Board of Assessors. I think that it's a good first place to start and to apply to others going forward, any that may come to town, perhaps, or some that aren't yet down, et cetera.
Okay, great. So I want to, I thank the team for all of their work on this, as well as for Massachusetts General Brigham for participating and cooperating and working with the town on this. At this point, if there are no further questions, I would entertain the motion?
If I ever want to speak there.
I just wanted to see if I could get Robin, if she...
Okay, sure.
I think it's because we're muted. I don't know if we can mute. Can you mute that computer?
It muted.
Okay.
Is the speaker off?
Can you hear us?
Yes!
She couldn't hear.
Now I can!
Sorry about that.
It's okay, there's an echo.
But she can't hear that idea.
I think she can.
But now I can.
Okay, can you still?
I guess not.
No.
I thought we had it set up like this.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Technical difficulties.
That's okay.
So the board is ready to vote, but if you want to just add anything, I'm going to mute so that they can hear you.
Okay, sure. Thank you. Unfortunately, I didn't hear anything that was said prior to Kristi just asking if I could hear you. But let me just say that I'm... Thank you for inviting me this evening. Apologies that I'm not with you in person. To thank you both, to thank you all individually. And I also want to thank you for the leadership you showed by publicly demonstrating your support for the project. It means a lot to MGB and MGB Integrated Care in particular. We really, really appreciate it. The process that we're going through with the state is longer than, taking longer than we imagined, so we sincerely appreciate your support. And I also want to acknowledge the efforts of Jonathan and Kristi and Ian, as well as your other department heads. I mean, it's really been a pleasure working with them. They've... I can assure you, they all represented the town's interests well, the planning board and the Select Board. So know that that occurred. And, but I think that we all feel that we reached a place that is right for the project and, more importantly, for Westboro. So on behalf of MGB and MGB Integrated Care, we look forward to being a part of the Westboro community. We really, as I've said in the past, Ian and Kristi and Jonathan, you know, it means a lot to us to really become part of the community. And a little awkward over Zoom, and then I can't see anyone, but know that we mean that sincerely and appreciate everyone's efforts to bring us to this point. So happy to answer any questions that you may have, and that's really what we wanted to say.
Okay, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to just chat her that there are no questions?
Yeah.
So we don't get the echo, and...
So I'll make a motion to move to approve the community service agreement between Massachusetts General Brigham, Inc. and the town of Westboro. Second?
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Seeing none, all in favor? Motion passes by a vote of 5 to 0, 5 being present.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Berry. She's off. And thank you to John, Kristi, Ian, and the team for all of the work to get us to this point. Okay, next on the agenda...
We're a little ahead of schedule.
And we are a little bit ahead of schedule, so the public hearing on the transfer of liquor license is scheduled for 6:30. We're a little ahead of schedule, so...
On a printed one, with the town manager.
Report for the printed one.
Oh, yep. So next, I'm sorry, is the town manager report.
Sorry. Apologies. I was looking at this one.
I was too, and I looked for the...
Yeah, sorry.
Good place to fit it.
So as an update, actually, this one is specific to the goals that the board has set for me and our staff, is information technology. So today, we applied for a community compact grant to do an information technology assessment, which was one of the goals that the board had set up, to do a comprehensive review of IT and also make recommendations. And so we'll do that. And then in addition, Mark Stockman, our IT director, will be seeking a state IT grant for the purpose of upgrading the town's virtualization hardware. I also, this is probably the prettiest town manager report that you have. We had a request from the cultural council to install the Bottle Cap mural that was created at the 2019 Arts in Common event, created by the community with the help of many. And so they've requested that it be installed on Bay State Common, so DPW is working on that. That's something that, per your rules and regulations, I can allow, but also just wanted to note that the cultural council is continuing to work on a public art policy, which will really inform this type of installation going forward. But I just thought it, you know, it's great, so we're excited. Hopefully it'll get in there before the Arts in Common event. We have lots of new employees, and so our new employee update, Chris Millar, who's not a new employee but has just been promoted to the position of Highway Lead Person, will start September 21st. Laura Susanin has been hired as a part-time 19-hour-per-week social worker in Youth and Family Services Department, starting next week. And Shab Khan has been hired as the town's Grants Administrator Procurement Officer, expected to start October 4th. She brings with her 15 years of public sector procurement and contract managed experience, so we're really excited. We're excited about all of them. ARPA proposals, we've talked about previously, so the town is projected to get $5.6 million in ARPA money, or American Rescue Plan money. Our process was to have department heads and committees that might be interested submit proposals for eligible projects. So we received 22 proposals by the deadline of the August 30th, totaling approximately $11.8 million, so a little bit higher than what we anticipate getting. But it's exciting. The finance team met earlier in September to talk about how we might evaluate the proposals, and really the finance team's role in this will just be to make recommendation to the board and the finance committee. So you'll see all of the proposals, but we want to put some structure around, you know, how we're recommending that the money be spent. And the Airplay Excellence winner is sitting right with you, Sheila Dorr, received the award for August. And department head updates, as everyone knows, we did some roadwork on West Main Street, a lot of work done right before school started to try to keep the disruption down. There's been some stormwater infrastructure work done that's helped with all the rain that we've gotten lately with flooding. And then we've had some retirements in the DPW. Tim Donovan served 31 years in the DPW, and Steve Bowman, 26 years. So both of them have recently retired. In the fire department, the fire department has remediated all of its Class B foam that contained PFAS that was in service on the town's apparatus, so they've done that through mitigation, and so that's really a big step forward. The fire department is also working with the building commissioner and the board of health on two nuisance properties at 160 and 170 Oak Streets. And then the fire chief has made us aware that Matt Stockwell has returned from serving in Afghanistan and Qatar for the US Force on September 3rd. And then dispatcher Joe Badgley will be placed in active duty when he deploys to Kuwait in October. The planning department is giving an update on some site plan activity, but you'll actually see a couple of those tonight. So one is 60 and 64 Otis Street, which is the same-day fulfillment center, and then 66 Otis Street, which is a microbrewery and brew pub. So we'll learn more about those later tonight. And then also the master plan final draft, there was a public hearing on September 9th where comments from the public were taken and incorporated, and then the final draft will be presented next Tuesday, the 21st, in your joint meeting with the planning board.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so next on the agenda is... Let me get a figure so I can read it. It's 6:28, so we won't vote the meeting open for two minutes. I'm looking if there's anything.
You can probably do number six.
So if we can jump forward to discussion vote on concurrence with the town manager's burial agent appointment?
Yep, so this was previous, the burial agent is appointed by me, but then you all have to concur with that appointment. It's part of the duties of the Health Department Director, so it was Steve, and then when he left, it was Ray who filled in as our interim, and now that Jen is here, we're appointing her as the burial agent.
Take a motion?
Yes, please. A motion, please.
I move to concur with the town manager's appointment of Health Director Jennifer Sullivan as the burial agent.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion from the board? Seeing none, we will vote, all in favor, 5, and opposed 0. Motion passes 5-0, 5 being present. Thank you very much. Okay, it being 6:30, or as close to as I'm going to get. Next item on the agenda is a request to transfer a liquor license for MS Partner LLC. This is a public hearing, advertised for 6:30 p.m. We'll, in a second, we'll entertain a motion to open the hearing, at which point the applicants can make any presentation they wish. We'll entertain questions from the Select Board and then open up any questions or comments from the public. This relates to High Point Liquors, a package store at Two Connector Road. The business is being sold, and the new owners are requesting to have the package store license transferred to them. The paperwork, per the town manager's guidance, the paperwork is in order and has been advertised within statutory requirements. So I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll move to open the public hearing with the request to transfer of liquor license for MS Partners LLC, the business High Point Liquors at Two Connector Road.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Do I have to roll call the hearing?
No.
Don't think so.
No.
No, okay. We'll vote, all in favor of opening the hearing. Vote of 5-0, 5 being present, the hearing is open. So if the applicants would like to step forward and make any presentation?
Hi.
Good evening.
We didn't prepare any material for presentation, but happy to answer any questions.
First of all, can you just introduce yourself for the record, so we can put it in a minute?
Yeah, we're the partners of Manpreet Singh and Sukhant Harkawal.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming this evening. We have a pretty thick packet of information that we were provided. Do any members of the board have any questions?
Not really a question, but, you know, the opportunity in front, and we have people in town listening, so if you just want to give a little bit about the business and what you're looking to do, and it could be keeping it as is or whatever, but anything you want to say to us and to the public about the business and, I guess, in essence, why you're interested in purchasing it.
Sure. Both of us have been investing in real estate for a while, and this is a new opportunity for us. We knew Devinderji, the previous owner, for a long time. We're going to keep the business as is for now, no changes.
So he is doing a very good job in following all the compliances, so we'll keep doing that. So the store doesn't have online presence much, so we'll be implementing that as well. So people in town should know about our High Point Liquors.
Great.
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you. Patrick? No, no questions.
Any questions?
Welcome.
Yep.
Thank you.
So I'll open up the floor to any members of the public who might have a question or comment? Okay, seeing none. I guess my only comment, I don't know if I can do it...
I do so well.
We appreciate all the information, and particularly your comment about compliance with the rules and regulations about managing and controlling the sale of liquor. It's a very large responsibility that we take seriously in the town, and we know that, you know, good business practices and good diligence will, you know, go a long way. And, you know, we hope never to have to see you before us because of a complaint or an issue.
We hope the same, yes.
And that we certainly, you know, wish you all the success as you take over the business and run it, and look for ways to grow and be a part of our community.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you.
At this point, I'll entertain the motion.
Yep. I move to approve the transfer of the package store license to MS Partners LLC, DBA High Point Liquors at Two Connector Road, naming Manpreet Singh as the manager of record.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any additional question or comment? Seeing, hearing none, we'll move to vote, all in favor. The motion passes 5-0, 5 being present. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Welcome to here, and welcome.
Thank you.
Looking forward to the business.
Okay.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second?
Whoever.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any objections or discussion? Seeing none, a vote. By vote of 5-0, 5 being present, the public hearing is closed, 6:34 p.m. Okay, I have to check the agenda.
6:45.
Okay, so we have about 10 minutes before our next posted public hearing, which is 6:45 p.m. Back to check the agenda. Okay, so we have about 10 minutes before our next posted public hearing, which is 6:45 PM. I'll ask if we are ready.
Do you want to start the financial policies?
Yeah, why don't we jump to the financial policies? Because that'll... You can start that process.
So as the boards are aware, one of our... Another goal was to update the comprehensive fiscal management policy to include an OPEB funding strategy. In addition to that, as the board's looking at your policies, we're also looking at all of our internal policies, which includes the investment policy. And so in your packet today, we've provided the investment policy, the OPEB trust fund investment policy, and then also the OPEB funding strategy, which would become an amendment to the comprehensive fiscal management policy. So understanding that the OPEB funding strategy is going to take a lot of discussion, we're hoping that this evening, the board could... Would consider approving both of the investment policies, and then we could start the conversation about the OPEB funding strategy. So the two investment policies have... Obviously about how the town invests our money. The treasurer-collector has taken that to the trustee of trust funds committee. It's also... They've also been reviewed by our financial advisors. And then recently, we went to the Advisory Finance Committee, who voted to support both of the investment policies. That's typically our strategy. We actually take those types of policies to our finance team. We sort of vet through them. Then they go to the Advisory Finance Committee and then come to you for approval. So if we want to focus on those two investment policies, then maybe we can talk about the funding strategy after. And we're just early, so Bob Paley is, I think, on his way up.
So are there questions about the investment policy or the OPEB investment policy?
I don't think there... I don't have... Well, I have a lot of questions, because candidly, it's not my space of strength, so I'm going to look to Ian and Sean, certainly, for their questions here. But I think it would be helpful for the public to understand, you know, at a summary level, kind of how these policies are shaped and their context and background.
Okay, so is... General, is investment policies... I don't know if you want to...
Well, yeah.
We can let Bob do that. Glad we started. We just moved the agenda item around a little bit, so...
You're at the podium, and I'm the spot.
So I just introduced it, but Shelby's question was for the public in summary, kind of what these policies are. So we're focusing the conversation right now on the investment policy and the OPEB and trust investment policy.
Okay. The investment policy is... The town had one. It was the last time it was written was 2008. So that was one of the, I think, the selectmen's goals, was to update the policies. And Leah and I looked at a number of policies from different communities. We put things together that we thought were the most relevant for the town. And we ran it by Rockland Trust, which is our financial management company for the trust funds. And, I don't know, tried to put together the best policy we had. It... Basically, it's focused on SESI, liquidity yield, things like that. They're important. It references, you know, investment income, investment securities the town can invest in, which is pretty limited on the short-term side. On the long-term side, there's a little more flexibility, but it basically is ruled by the state. There's a list of legal investments that the town really can't go off, so there's not too much flexibility on that point. The policy says that we can't have more than 25% in any one bank. And there's, you know, it has statutory references, like most policies do, and things like that. But it was... It was... I think it was just an attempt to update something that hadn't been looked at in a long, long time, and there's been a lot of changes in the last 13 years. So, like I said, that's something we tried to do with that. The OPEB policy is a little different. Not many communities have that. We couldn't find that many policies out there. A lot of them are tied into what their management company says, so we got a couple of policies. We put those together. And again, we ran that by Rockland Trust, which is the investment company that manages the town's money. I don't know if you read it or you have any questions on it, or... It's probably not a good explanation, but it's... You know, the town is a huge business. We have almost $55 million in the bank on any given month, just in short-term funds. You know, in trust funds, we have almost $20 million. So we're not a small business, and you need things in place, I think, that set what the town is going to do. And that was really trying to focus on that. There's some things in the back that Leah and I have started to do as far as... I give reports at the end of the month as far as how much is in every bank, what we make for investment income, things like that. But that's the reason, you know, we engaged in the process, was we're a huge company. You know, you need to have some policies in place, and it can't just be, you know, Bob likes this bank or Bob likes that bank. I do like it. No, I'm just... So I don't know if you have any questions, or...
No, I mean, I think that that's helpful. Certainly, the policies will be made available and posted online, so anyone can read them, and you, certainly our town manager, are available for questions should they arise, right?
Sure, absolutely. You know, and like I said, there's some reports that I just... I don't have them with me. I can get them to you, but I started doing with Leah on a monthly basis, starting in July, where the banks are listed, the amount of money is in the bank, the accounts are referenced, the amount of money we're making as far as investment income is listed. And we're not making much, which is kind of disturbing, but...
Is what it is.
It's the best you can do.
Well, I think people respect what we inspect, right? And so we're just tracking it. I think that's important, and there's a policy that's updated.
Sure.
So thank you for all that work.
Well, Leah put a lot of work into it, too.
I know.
Yeah, I'd say thank you for doing the work as well, and the whole team. Being new to the board, I'm not entirely sure what the process is here. Does the Advanced Finance Committee also look at these policies with you, or...
Yeah, I'm sorry. I mean, we ran it by the finance team, looked into it, which is...
Right, so the process is we start with the finance team, and then recently, we took it to the Advisory Finance Committee, and they voted to support them, but it's your approval, so...
And you also went to the financial advisors, too?
Right. We have the financial advisors that took a look at that. Just to be on the safe side.
And I get... Do you have something?
Just a comment, so you go ahead.
So my comment is, as a member of the finance team and, you know, reviewing the drafts of the policy and the input, it was... I think it was great to see a fresh perspective and taking a step back and looking strategically at how... What the policies we want to have in place to guide those investments, and really with an emphasis on protecting the money.
Absolutely.
So the safety of the funds and the appropriate level of liquidity. And obviously, we can't have money tied up in something. If the money's supposed to be spent, then we can't get the money. So safety first, liquidity, you know, as well as then looking at yield and returns and regulatory compliance, and so...
But just so you know, you know, there's been a lot of talk. There was a town out in New Hampshire that lost a lot of money a couple of weeks ago.
You just talking to the microphone a little bit more?
Oh, I'm sorry. There was a town out in New Hampshire that lost a lot of money a couple of weeks ago because of, well, someone, I guess, hacked into their account and took the money out. But we actually have a process. We have... It's called debit blocks on all our accounts. And so we don't allow any vendors to go in and take any money out. I shouldn't say that. There's a couple of places that do their contract. Like the state will come in and take some money out. Parks and Rec has something set up with the vendor. But we limit the amount of money that they can actually take from our account. So every other account is blocked. People can't go in and, you know, do things like that, so just so you know.
He's talking about my hometown.
Oh, boy.
You didn't hear the comment?
Yeah, I just saw the comment. I mean, this is, I think Shelby said, I look at these things every day in dealing with institutions at work. And it's standard. It's prudent fiduciary responsibility. I think, looking through this, this is very solid and better than a lot, I see, that large pension funds and others do. So kudos to the team for putting together. I think, as was talked about, what we can invest in. More importantly, what also is in here is what we can't invest in. So people should be, you know, happy to hear that we're not going into speculative investments and hedge funds and those types of things. Those are strictly forbidden. We're not doing short sales. We're not, you know, going crazy. But I think those are the pieces of spelling out what we can invest in, and to me, more importantly, of what you can't invest in. But I think putting these in place is absolutely best practice. I would recommend that the finance team looks at these things annually for any changes, because that's, I think, again, prudent financial practice. But again, thank you for putting this together. These look really good.
Thank you. Sean?
Yeah, no, yeah, I would echo that. Thank you very much. I appreciate the general funds policy, and you've referenced quite a few state requirements here. So appreciate that the homework's been done in terms of what the state requires of you. Also, it is, I think, very detailed what is considered a sort of a cash investment and what isn't, and so what you're restricted to looks very safe. I also appreciate on the OPEB investment policy that you do mention here that you have a benchmark you've created with, you know, the investment manager, and you're evaluated against it, and you're reporting and looking at them quarterly. So I think all prudent actions you're taking related to these activities. So I'm comfortable with both these documents. Thank you.
I mean, I don't know if you want to talk about OPEB more. I mean, that's completely different than, you know, the shot in the long term, but essentially, we did the same thing. Like I said, Leah and I looked at a number of different communities and tried to put together the best we could. But it really was the management team that... At Rockland Trust, and that helped us put that together, because they have way more experience. I think they're dealing with 100 different communities. And a lot of it is tied into what they do and things like that, so...
Yep, Patrick?
Does the state mandate that Rockland is a fiduciary? I'm just curious, are they...
I'm sorry?
Is Rockland fiduciarily responsible?
Yes, they are.
They are, okay.
They are.
Thank you.
I'd make a motion to approve the investment policy and the OPEB investment policy as presented.
Okay, I think Patrick jumped in a little first.
Sean's a little slow.
Moved and seconded. Any further questions or comments? Seeing, hearing none, we'll vote. All in favor? The motion passes five-zero, five being present. Thank you, Bob, and thanks to Leah. Please extend a gratitude for all the hard work on this. We still have discussion of...
The OPEB's.
The OPEB funding, but we'll come back to that when it's on the agenda.
Okay. So, thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
So it being six... Forty-seven on my clock? I argue about what time it is on the Internet. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. A request for a new all-alcohol license for South Sea Village. This is a public hearing advertised for 6:45 PM. And we'll open the hearing shortly. Again, the process, the applicant will have a chance to make any comments. We'll entertain questions from the select board and then the public at large. As background, this is a request for new all-alcohol license for a restaurant to be named as South Sea Village, going in at 95 Turnpike Road. For those not familiar with addresses along Route 9, that's the former Chateau Restaurant. When there is a new license versus a transfer, the board also... Oh, I lost my place. The board also has to pledge a license to the entity. The applications and attorney have submitted paperwork, and this hearing has been legally advertised according to statute. Yes?
Go ahead. You can open it.
Okay, so I do have to open it, don't I?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting.
I'll move to open the public hearing regarding the request for new all-alcohol liquor license and to pledge a license for Asian Paradise doing business at South Sea Village at 95 Turnpike Road.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in... Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll vote. All in favor? Five-zero. By vote of five-to-zero, five being present, the public hearing is open. And so if you could take a moment to introduce yourself and...
Sure. Good evening. My name is Wade, attorney for this company, Asian Paradise Inc., DBA South Sea Village. And I just had a brief discussion with town manager, and I understand that it is probably premature tonight for the board to consider the pending application, because there are some issues we need to address. So I would request for a continuous of this hearing, so to allow my client to have a chance to meet with the building department, health department, before we come back, before this board. And we are talking about... I'm thinking about maybe well into December, but I'll work out with the schedule with Karen downstairs when we get there.
So we would want to... We could continue... You could continue the hearing to December 14th, which is the second Tuesday. And then if we need to make a change, we can do that.
All right.
Okay, thank you. I'll need a motion to continue the hearing until December 14th.
I'll move to continue this public hearing to the selectmen's meeting on 12/14. Do we want to set a time? Typically, I think we set it.
Oh, yep. 6:30?
For 6:30 PM on December 14th, 2021.
Moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Seeing, hearing none, we'll vote. All in favor? The public hearing is continued on a vote of five-to-zero, five being present.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. No, don't close it. We continued it, yep.
We continued it.
So it's out there in the ether.
Right, reopen, sorry.
Okay. Next on... Where we are, timelines. Okay, so next on the agenda is a site plan overview for 60 and 64 Otis Street.
A few minutes early there, right?
We're a few minutes early, but if they're ready, we can begin. And the applicant for the site plan is Atlantic Management Corporation.
Excuse me. Good evening, gentlemen, members of the board. For the record, Robert Buckley, Raymond Bronstein. I have with me this evening Christine Hung, an associate in my office, and Joe Zink, who's a principal of Atlantic Management. Just to orient the board, this is adjacent to the 50 Otis Street, which is the robotics facility of Amazon. We are proposing a multifaceted approach to this corridor, the first being 64, which is before the planning board now, which would be a combination of an expansion of the robotics facility as well as a mini fulfillment center. We feel that... I don't know if we can put the site plan up for the boards? Just to orient the board, to my right, that right is Otis Street. We also have... Chrissy, maybe if you want to pass those out. We weren't able to get them submitted for purposes of the electronic presentation, but we have a rendering of what the facility would look like on the ground. This is one of many steps that we hope to entertain over the next few years as we develop this corridor. We feel confident that the traffic and the impacts will be adequately addressed. And to be honest with you, I have to say, in all my years professionally, this is one of the more cooperative endeavors I've been involved with, with your staff from the planning board, community development. I have the distinct pleasure back in... Was it 2004, Jim? Being involved with the first rail transit district, which was the residential component. Being involved with the first rail transit district, which was the residential component. And I'm thrilled to see, because I'm a policy wonk. And I'm thrilled to see this as a rail transit oriented development, both integrating rail transit, transportation, jobs, high paying jobs, technology, all in one corridor. And it's an exciting endeavor. And the design team has worked very diligently to address all of the comments we've received to date from the town departments. We've worked trying to integrate this into the environment. I know there was a board member here that spent a good part of a day last week hiking through the woods in that area. So that when it's done, I think we're all going to be very proud of it. The other component of this is we have two proposed warrant articles to change the zoning, which dovetails with this project because there is a gap between this site and fifty, which we would hopefully over time fill in. And we have, the reason we're putting the development or the zoning in place, it's a tool for both the town as well as the applicant as we go forward to look at issues that may come up that may demand a little more flexibility. And so that's the purpose of the zoning articles and changing the, to the industrial, the industrial D, our I.D. Overly District, to allow us to have some flexibility and as well as the town as we go forward. One of the things that we are very strong on is we're working with the planning staff to do a corridor study of Otis Street. And we have spent a lot of time integrating this site, fifty, and thinking about the proposed future so that we can integrate the overall development template into the corridor study. And it's an opportunity that the town should be very excited about because one way or another, I think we're going to have stimulus funds coming out in the next year. You touch all the bases in terms of a planning template between rail transit, traffic mitigation, pedestrian accessibility. So our approach is let's approve the, or let's do the entire corridor study now to create an opportunity so that the town and the citizens could be first in line for some of those funds. And to that end, we've actually had discussions with some professionals that have worked with the town in the past in terms of grant applications to try to put something together. And it's a great story. I mean, you were one of the first to have rail transit with a residential. And now you're supplementing that with the industrial. And it's a good working relationship. So rather than get into the weeds, and I know you have a crowded agenda, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll go from my left to right. So Sean?
Thank you. Thank you. I noticed in the plans it mentions there are wetlands in the area. And I guess they're in, I guess this is more my try to get an understanding. There's a stream, but it's not a permanent stream.
A perennial stream. It was staying out of all the resource areas. You'll see the lines up there that this project will stay out of the resource areas. We may have a determination of that, but we've designed it. Spent a lot of time to focus on that.
Thank you very much. And in the diagram you just sent out, what is the area that is outlined behind the building there?
Those are your wetlands. Those are primarily the wetlands, the resource.
But it looks like it's just behind the parking lot and there's.
That's a detention basin?
That's a detention basin.
Right. Now, I should point out, one of the things that this development and it's the, hopefully the future complementary developments will do is it's going to clean up this area. There is some issues with respect to what it was used for previously. And this project will make a, will remediate that situation.
Oh, and I like the fact that is it the road on the left there? You talked about, I think, the diagrams lining it up with the road that is coming out from Stop and Shop.
One of the things that the corridor study has recommended is it's, is it Arcade Plaza?
Yep.
Arcade Plaza, trying to wherever possible to line up the intersections for two reasons. One, it's a safety issue. It's better to have a teed intersection. And two, to the extent that in the future there's a need for a light, you're not, by pulling it back further and aligning it, the distance between any proposed light for this facility and Route Nine, the distance increases, so you space it. So a lot of thought has gone in, and it's not from our side alone. I do have to acknowledge the town staff. A lot of these suggestions did come from the town. So it's been a very collaborative effort. But my view is put it in place now as much as we can. It's always easy to tweak it as you create a feedback loop and say, you know, maybe we should do this. But if we go, if we do it piecemeal without thinking it through, you always run the risk of missing opportunities. And the stars are all aligned from funding, from coordination, from technology. This is, I don't know if you've driven by the facility, but the existing robotics facility is impressive.
Thank you.
This is Joe Zink?
And following Bob's comment in terms of facility.
If you can just.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Joe Zink, Atlantic Management. The end of this month, we're going to be sent out invitations to all town officials involved in the project, selectmen, planning, conservation, building department, police, fire, to come out and tour the facility. So we're going to.
How about the lawyers?
How much an hour? To come out and see it because I want to follow what Bob said. Atlantic, we're in twenty-six communities, and you don't always get this cooperation. And I think one of the reasons this project's gone well and it's been attended is very, very happy with it. And they want to continue investment within the community is the cooperation. Above and beyond in terms of flexibility, accommodating schedules. And this project actually came in a few months early, which during COVID is remarkable. We haven't had, we didn't have one of the projects come in early. So I think the continued investment, and we have picked up some other parcels along Otis Street. We do want to do sidewalks to connect it all. We want to upgrade the landscape along the way and have it as a beautiful campus. So continue to make those investments. It always is too, when it's early on, that feeling, I remember when we first bought this property, we sat down to have some discussions about some things we were thinking. And you kind of get a feeling of, let's work together. I mean, we came from Marlboro, we had a great experience. We have a great experience here. We look forward to making further investments within the community.
Thank you. To that point, one of the things that I think the board should be aware of, the facility is being designed to be, I don't want to say net zero, because I don't really know exactly what that means, but there'll be no fossil fuels being used here. So I know obviously it puts property that heretofore was not tax positive on the tax rolls because it was subject to a sixty, chapter sixty-one, I believe, limitation. So theoretically, in about a year and a half, you could have a new office building in a seaport where people could get on the commuter rail and go to the West Coast Station and walk to a facility. It's not, that is excellent planning.
Shelby?
Yes, so thank you for all the detail. Certainly, the packet was extensive and really, I want the public to understand that, and really appreciate the difference between, or understanding of that word cooperation. I think that it's clear, certainly from my one-on-one conversations with our town planner and others, that cooperation doesn't mean just sort of, sort of give away the farm, so to speak. It really means cooperation. And it means, just like we heard about the MGB agreement and the nature of those negotiations. I think this is my understanding. I haven't been directly involved, but a very fair, collaborative. And I love the long-term strategy and planning that is going into this. So thank you to everyone involved. I would like to understand that there's extensive information in our packet, but about the traffic study, a little bit more. My understanding is that there are essentially, other than just, I'll call it sort of like regular staff that might be, you know, managing the facility, there are two types of vehicles. So it would be heavy trailer trucks going in the top entrance there.
Yep.
And then what are considered civilian drivers. So can you list it a little more?
There's really three types. There'll be the robotics, the technical staff that will work, the large deliveries spread out over a twenty-four hour period, most of them occurring.
Could I, do you mind if I just add to that?
No, please.
Because education for me too is, because it was put in there and it was in quotes, mini fulfillment. And I just, a definition for me would be helpful on.
It'd be, this would be considered a sub same-day facility. So there's the overnight, next day, then sub same day. And this deliveries usually come at night, ten at night to four in the morning. You might get ten to twelve trailers spaced out. And then during the day, the deliveries will go out. Well, a lot of these will be two-hour deliveries. So you can call, or you can call, be online, order something, and it'll come within that same day. So it's less versus forty-four hundred computer drive. This is a much smaller facility, has less truck trailer traffic, and then less, not the waves that that has. So it's much less, you see a parking is much less than you see at forty-four hundred.
Thank you.
So just sort of in that, a couple of things, and I'm sharing this really as comments for, to pass on to the planning board. As we think about build out of this site, and it's much more visible on these plans. You've got the target fields down here. It would be great to understand connectivity to those fields. In, you know, as much traffic, I think, I'm not a traffic expert, that we can move off of Otis, the better. So obviously you have to, you know, ensure that the site is secure and, you know, for business purposes. But connectivity to the residential area over there, the transit-oriented village park, I believe it is, the park apartments and target, I would like to assume, but I'd like some confirmation that that's part of the corridor study and effort.
The transportation aspect is, but we've also had discussions with the staff on that. To the extent that the owners of those sites are willing to cooperate, we, because I remember back years ago when the residential went in, there were some that were not, did not want to pursue it. But, you know, oftentimes it's educating individuals to see that it's in everyone's best interest that everyone works together. And I think, I believe it was you that made the comment that cooperation doesn't mean necessarily giving in. It means having a frank discussion and figuring what everyone's interest is and see if there's commonality of interest.
Right, right.
And I think that Joe Zink and his company, and both here and other communities, has shown that over the years. It's always been a charge that he gives us, which is there's a solution on the table. Let's see if we can figure it out.
Sure. So I think that that, you know, as we think about this part of town and that connectivity, Joe, you mentioned that, or, you know, kind of beautification, the sidewalks. I was that individual through the, being a member of the Hakamaka Reuse Committee, to go out and walk the site, to understand trail connectivity or future trail connectivity in this whole area, obviously connecting to Hakamaka and the transit area. So I think there's, I can't emphasize enough, I mean, the opportunity that is represented here for Westboro. And not just sort of this side of Route Nine, so to speak, but also the other side of Route Nine where we've heard from residents who live and arrive, who have difficulty crossing, and kind of what this potentially long-term could mean to them as this area is built out. So it's very exciting. I think it would be helpful at some point to understand, just going back to traffic a little bit, to understand civilian vehicle model a little bit more. And I'm going to go way into the weeds here for a moment, so this just might be more of an explanation for the board. But just to understand, once those vehicles, assuming this goes forward, are deployed, understanding, are those vehicles identifiable? Do they just look like anyone's vehicles? Do they have like a, you know, you see an Uber or Lyft, it's like got a little decal? Are the drivers identified? You know, because this is traffic we might expect anyway, right? People are ordering things. It's the nature of the economy. But how are, you know, this business will now be kind of in our town, if you will, in a different model. So I'd like to understand that.
It would be a combination which we can get further into as we.
Okay, that would be great. At some point, again, pretty in the weeds here. And the other, just in terms of connectivity, I know we're hearing after this about sixty-six Otis, separate project. But, you know, if there's, I guess I'm wondering, you have the trailer, the heavy trailer truck entrance there. Does it make sense to create, this is for the next part, Jim, Christie, a separate curb cut for sixty-six, or should it be a shared entryway? So that, you know, because sixty-six is right up, I mean, I don't know, what, two hundred yards, not even that, from that entrance? So we're going to have a cut, a cut, and, you know, is that something that we should be considering?
Jim, please.
So Jim Robbins, town planner. That will definitely be discussed during the public hearings with two projects. They're both being heard at the planning board starting next Tuesday on the twenty-first. They're heard back to back. So we will discuss that access issue at that time. I will say, and Bob mentioned this earlier, and so did Joe followed up on this as well, that the corridor study is a comprehensive study. It looks at everything from the Route Nine and Otis Street intersection all the way to the MBTA station. And it's intended to inform the individual land use developments as a whole, a comprehensive study so that each site is developed in combination with either existing sites or planned new development so that it's a more efficient use of Otis Street. To reduce the number of curb cuts is something that's discussed in that corridor study. So that speaks to your point. And the two projects will not be considered as silos. They will be considered as working together.
For now, those are my comments. So thank you very much. Thanks for all the work that's gone into this.
Yeah, I guess, Jim, I was going to get to before you sat down, so if you could help me with this. But Bob, you said as well, just curious as to this comprehensive study and how that works into what we have in front of us here and you'll have in front of you, how that, because it sounds like that's still ongoing. And if there's things such as sidewalks that was talked and other things, how do you as a board take that into account? And I guess it comes back to us offering comments on this, which, A, I'm very supportive of this. This makes sense. It's been a good business partnership so far, and I look forward to continuing. But I also want to make sure that we don't lose out on something because this gets approved prior to that study being done. So just some clarification, that'd be great.
That's a really good question, and we share your concern. So the corridor study is ongoing right now. It's winding down. But it's very fortunate that this proposal comes forward at this time because the corridor study has this plan and is looking at their proposed locations for curb cuts in relation to existing curb cuts on the street, particularly, as was mentioned earlier, the Arcade Centers Speedway Plaza and their curb cut and trying to align the driveway for the worker vehicles, the passenger vehicles, and the delivery trucks to create a four-way intersection. And that's a more specific solution to the primary access for, or egress, I should say, for the delivery trucks as well as the primary access and egress for the workers' vehicles. So that would reduce a point of conflict and rather create a better line of sight and better turning movements by aligning those two intersections. So that's actually a recommendation of the corridor study. And that's because they considered this plan. They'll also have to add the plan for sixty-six Otis Street because that is so new and coming to us. They didn't have the advantage of that prior to reaching their preliminary conclusions. But to say a little more about the corridor study, and you'll hear that specifically at a later date, it does include not only vehicular traffic, but pedestrian and bicycle traffic as well. It addresses things like signalizations, crosswalks, bicycles, and sidewalks as well for all of the uses on Otis Street leading to the train station.
Thank you.
If I could just add to that, all of the property owners participated in discussions on the corridor study. So all the property owners along Otis Street were active participants and understand what the town's thinking is, what the consultant's thinking is, so that everyone, there'll be no surprises, hopefully.
That's great. That's great to hear. Thank you for that. And just the last thing, and partially I asked someone first, as I read, but just to make sure I understand, and I guess the public does too, is we're looking at what's in front of us. of us, the parking lot that's in front of the building, is that employee parking there? And then to what's, to me, the bottom part of that, is that, the back is then the track trailer loading docks all the way to the back?
Right, that is correct.
And then the side, the loading is on the side?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. And then the final thing is...
I'm sorry, that's why the, and the intent was to separate heavy traffic, truck traffic, from the employee traffic.
Yep, which I think is great, so it's perfect. I did notice some talks about gates and other stuff to keep that in place. And then I guess the final question is the, I'm going on Select Board Member Marshall's question, the distance from kind of the back of this facility to the residential community in the back, I don't even see this, see it really in the picture, but do you know that distance? And then what kind of buffering or anything is proposed? I see there's trees and other things there, but is there buffering? Thinking about, again, the...
The truck loading.
The truck loading, we're hearing about it at night.
I think that the feeling and the sound information is ample distance, but that will be something we will look at at the planning board, as we did at 4400 also.
Okay.
Lighting.
Yeah, lighting.
Lighting, absolutely, yes.
So I guess from my side, that'd just be a comment from us to the planning board. It sounds like they're going to be talking about that anyways, but that's definitely a concern for residents. But I know it, it looks like a big enough distance and can be mitigated, so. That's all questions I have. Thank you.
Patrick?
Yeah, I would, you know, echo many of the comments by the other board members. I sit on, or I liaise on to the planning board, so I've been an observer of many of the conversations. And I'll say, I think it's been a very positive experience as well, you know, in the right direction. And I think that this plan is a good design headed in the right direction. So thank you for, the team, for doing all the work that you're doing here. Many of my questions are already asked, but I do have one question. It's great that the corridor study is going forward, and that there's more work and consideration being made there. I guess what I'm not hearing is, I know that there are other communities in the area that have experienced issues with traffic getting diverted inadvertently into other neighborhoods. Is there any plan to have a traffic study that incorporates the Fisher Street and Art Street areas in the town to make sure that, other than normal delivery-type traffic, that we're not getting, you know, obviously 18-wheelers coming down through those areas lost in the night, that type of thing?
Yeah, I think we will be addressing those in a couple of things. One, we can condition that, and what we like to do is to have a look back, so that our data stands on its own, so that after 12 months, 18 months, you know, we look at it and say, what we said initially, has it come to pass? There is some control aspects, so one of the, from the fulfillment component of this, you can alter the trips out, you can change the timing if that's a problem. If there is a lot of neighborhood cut-throughs, we can address that.
In regards to the trailers, they control that. So they control, you know, mandate they come down Route 9, go to Otis Street, and leave that way. So that it's, the good thing is, similar to 4400, where before, the trails are there now, there's no control when they go, there's no idling at night, they can't leave it on or anything like that. So it's very disciplined of how they do it.
Yeah, 4400 is a kind of a little bit more unique situation. I mean, Route 9 is right there, it's, you know, right, this is, there's the backside...
I think for Route 9 here, this is such easy access.
It is, it is. I'm just worried about somebody taking a right-hand turn instead of a left-hand turn out to Route 9, and they end up down on Fisher Street, and then we're going through many neighborhoods.
There'd be no reason to go down there.
Okay.
We can control that with directional signage and compliance. They work with it, they work with it.
They control it.
Again, my questions are really formed to help the planning board, you know, ask these questions as well, so I'm sure that these will come up in those discussions. So, thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
So I looked at the truck issue a little bit, and reading through the narrative that went in with the application. One, there's a bridge on Fisher Street with a weight restriction for trucks, so truck GPS would route a semi-trailer away from Fisher Street anyways.
Hopefully.
Hopefully. Ways, the car ones won't, but the ones that are built for the trucking industry would, hopefully.
Doesn't work on the bridge.
But also, there is mention in the narrative that the applicants are supportive and would work to support an effort with Mass DOT to have a heavy truck exclusion on Fisher Street, to keep the trucks off as well.
Which is actively being pursued today.
Which is actively being pursued.
We've had discussions.
Yeah, and if I may, I'll just add a point here. Also, on the Art Street side, that's actually a cut-through that a lot of people use to get the graft in over to Mass Pike. So I don't know if these truck GPS systems will route them in that direction, but I would be concerned that somebody might be routed that way, I guess.
Yeah, although Art Street has a low railroad bridge, or a low...
That's true.
...bridge, which is...
They'll learn quick. They have experience with that.
Having downloaded a GPS for an RV, the RV would not get routed on Art Street.
I think we have a new town seal.
A new town seal, a different bridge. All we need is more than one railroad bridge taking the tops off of trucks. So a question is, in the narrative, in the section on zoning analysis, there's no mention of the desire to go from industrial B to industrial D for this neighboring property. So I guess my question is, is this facility, for the public, the biggest difference is between, and Jim can correct me if I'm wrong, between industrial B and industrial D, is the height of the building and the percentage of open space? And so this building is proposed, just looking at it, I can't imagine it needs the additional open space, you know, to use more land and have less open space. Is this building looking at the height requirement, or are you looking prospectively to the future for the properties as continuous?
Future development along the corridor, to put that in place now, so that as we plan it, we can have those discussions. We're not sure we're going to need it, but we want to have the ability, as I assume a town would want to have the ability to be flexible. I make my living doing zoning, and one of the things that we're finding across the Commonwealth is that zoning that is rigid creates two things. Users don't want to stop and try to go through the process, and if you do, you wind up perhaps with not a well-designed project, because you have to live with rigidity that doesn't allow a flexible approach to say, hey, if we do this, it's a better project. That's all we're shooting for here. We have no idea to use it, we may not need it, and if, we have no objection if others on the corridor want to go along with it also, but we felt that it's inappropriate for us to zone someone else's property, so.
Okay, thank you. And then all my other comments and questions have been stated and answered. I guess my other concern, which relates to traffic, is that north on Otis Street from this facility, we have the primary, or one of the primary entrance and exit for the Target property. And then we've got two small commercial and retail, you know, centers.
We've had discussions on that.
And today, it can be, at certain times of the day, it can be very hard to get in and out of those driveways. And just so, a comment for me, if the planning board would be, knowing this ties in with the corridor study and the desired redesign of the Route 9 and Otis Street intersection, you know, just consideration and whatever mitigation or assistance can be provided to make sure that those businesses don't lose customers, because they're just too inconvenient, you know, oh, like you can go to Mo's, but you can never get out of the parking lot, so you're not going to go there, right? We don't want that. We want those businesses to also have an opportunity to thrive.
Well, that's one of the reasons we shifted the driveway down, is to create a greater distance. And I can't emphasize enough, the timing couldn't be better, to go in the next six months with a, hopefully a completed corridor study, an active development program creating jobs, a well-thought-out template for what the roadways would look like, and a rail transit station within walking distance. If I'm at the state or federal level looking at discretionary funding, what base haven't we touched? And I think you're unique there. I mean, and you opened up the Worcester market, you opened up the Boston market, it's ideally situated.
I'd add to, I would add to that, you know, the open space of Hakamaka and the recreation, and, you know, and again, I didn't acknowledge, but the fact that this is a very green building, whether it's not zero otherwise, is very exciting. That was one of my questions, Mr. Welch, I'm surprised you didn't pick up on that?
Yeah, absolutely, I agree with you.
And people always act out of their own self-interest, as others on this corridor that perhaps haven't been as cooperative in trying to coordinate driveways, see what's happening, it may be in their best interest to join the parade.
Thank you.
Ellen, are we going to talk about the rezoning? That's another agenda.
That's another agenda.
Okay, are we going to?
That's next.
Okay.
So, hold on.
Okay, no, 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 you mentioned zoning, so I have a follow-on question.
Well, because it's so, well, it's so interrelated, so.
Okay.
So thank you very much. We have a couple of comments to forward to the planning board.
Yeah, so just to make sure that we captured everything, so the connectivity to Target, the Fields residential area, TOV Park, understanding identification of vehicles, drivers, civilian vehicles, and the fleet, looking at curb cuts for 66 and 64, and how those will work along Otis. Consideration of these projects and the timing of the corridor study and how they'll work together. Buffering for the residential community, buffering of lighting and sound for the abutting residential community, and then also truck traffic into residential neighborhoods.
And the look-back study for traffic as well, as mentioned.
That was mentioned to us, we didn't come up with it.
It was mentioned to us, I'd like to include that in the request to the planning board, that that be included.
It was a good idea. We'll give you credit for that one, though.
I don't know if you will.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is, is it a discussion vote? It's a presentation and discussion of the zoning articles for the Fall Town Meeting Warrant.
Right, so you have three zoning articles on the Fall Town Meeting Warrant. Tonight's discussion is focused on, let me see, we keep renumbering them, so. Tonight's discussion would be focused on Article 18, which is that, one of the parcels we were just talking about, the rezoning of one corner of that parcel. And then Article 19, which is the extension of the Article ID overlay for 50, 54, 60, and 64 Otis. So I don't know, Jim, if you want to start, or...
See, we're collaborating already. So this, these two articles, they're integrated, so I'm going to take them both at the same time, so that you can understand them. I know that you have some information in front of you. There's a small portion of 64 Otis Street, which is zoned highway business. When the highway business line was drawn, it was just drawn as a distance from the center line of Route 9. This was done when the highway business and general industrial districts were formed back in the 1970s. And they were actually very enlightened, creative districts at that time. But they were simply a geometric measure from the distance of 500 feet, I believe it was, from the center line of Route 9. So they were irrespective of property lines. So some property lines were cut in half. In other words, they shared multiple districts. And of this much larger parcel, 64 Otis Street, 27,000 square feet, or a little over a half an acre of land, is in the highway business district, while the balance of the property, which I think is about 36 acres, 36 acres, is general industrial. So it makes no sense to have a half an acre be in one district while the balance of the property is in the general industrial. And the reason to say, well, what's the difference? Why should we care? Is because the highway business district is much more limiting when it comes to industrial uses. You have to maintain a setback between the zone lines, not just the property lines, between the zone lines. So in this case, you'd have to maintain a setback, I think it's 1,000 feet, from the highway business district into the industrial district before you begin working. So this is not advantageous for this comprehensive plan for this campus. So I'd recommend that you support the first zoning article, which is to change the portion of 64 Otis Street, that is currently zoned highway business or BA, to general industrial or IB.
Okay, and you also wanted to introduce Article 19, because they're closely related.
Yes, so the second article has to do with the ID overlay. And the proposal is to include 64 Otis, 60 Otis Street, 50 Otis Street, and 54 Otis Street. So you know 50 Otis Street is the currently Amazon Robotics site. 54 Otis Street is the farm building, was to be a gentleman's farm, then it was taken over by a landscape company, and they altered the barn. You probably are aware of that, it's right next to 50 Otis Street. 58 and 60 Otis Street, go by two addresses, is the Bavarian Homestead. It's where the greenhouses are, and the family homestead is on that lot. And then 64 Otis Street, you're familiar with because you just heard the site plan proposal. So the idea is to allow those four parcels together to be overlaid with the industrial D overlay, to take advantage of the increased height, the reduced open space. But with the ID zoning, there's also the requirement for low-impact development and energy-efficient development techniques. Thank you. So you see here on this assessor's map, 54 Otis Street, 60 Otis Street, 64 Otis Street, and 50 Otis Street, which is at the largest parcel that's highlighted. Those four parcels would be overlaid with the industrial D zoning, to allow increased height and reduced open space, in exchange for low-impact development techniques and energy-efficient energy, I'm sorry, building requirements. And in today's concern for environmental sustainability, I think that's a much better development for this site. And as Bob Buckley said earlier this evening, it allows additional creativity. They don't know that they'll avail themselves to it, but I think it's a much better idea for this property.
I just wanted to show, so going back to the other article, the 64 here, you can see that corner that Jim was describing, because this is the husband zoning layer.
That's the little triangle that's yellow.
Little triangle wedge.
And if I could just, Mr. Chairman, add, this goes to what a number of the board members brought up, interconnectivity. So as you master plan a site, you want to make sure the zoning and the opportunities are the same. So when you look at, you know, over the next few years, if this develops the way we think it will, how can we work as a unit to make it work, in terms of interconnectivity? And one of the first steps is to make sure the zoning matches.
Okay, thank you.
The planning board public hearing on both of these proposals is the 28th of September.
Okay. This time I'll go my right to left, so Patrick, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I guess, I guess my question is, looking at this, is very helpful. How do you, this is a question for you, Jim, how do you anticipate this will affect other properties that have those split zoning kind of personalities, I call it, right? I mean, there's quite a few on here that are both purple and orange or yellow. How do you, how do you see that playing out?
So I don't see it negatively impacting any of them. I think perhaps in the future, it may incent them to wish to have the same zoning.
Okay.
You?
No, I mean, the first one, the 64 Otis Street makes complete sense, in looking at that, that, to me, is kind of a no-brainer. I totally see the reason, and will support that. I guess the question I have somewhat related to Select Member Welch's question is, so we're doing this side, has there been any thought of trying to look at the other side across the street and making this whole piece of it ID at this time?
So the master plan looks at that, and the master plan will hopefully be adopted this month, and that would probably be something we'd bring to Town Meeting in the very near future.
Okay.
But of course, it's going to take the ascent of those property owners as well.
That'd be the other piece.
So in this case, obviously, the properties are all owned by one management team. But in the future, we'd have to notify all of the property owners that you see there in purple, that are zoned IB as an underlying district, including those properties that are currently occupied by uses other than industrial. I'm sure that they wouldn't want the overlay, but some of the others might. So we'd have to look at what makes the best planning sense, as well as what the property owners want. And that's not a simple process, that could take many months.
Perfect.
So Chairman, may I add a comment?
Sure.
I think it's a point to note, too, that by rezoning it to the ID, you're not giving approvals. The planning board will remain the permanent granting authority, you'd still have to get their approvals for things that go on there. So by rezoning it, all you're doing is... So it's just a, an opportunity to look at it and say, if we're going to do this, let's do it right and have all the zoning the same, and then the planning board or the permanent granting authorities will make the decision whether it's worthwhile to do.
Yeah, it's just one final thing that, and Jim, you can probably help me with this, and my memory may be lapsing, but I do recall that when we did the other side of town with this ID district, this area was considered, and I believe what was happening is people were saying, well, what's the plan? What, you know, where does it go, whatever? I think what was just said is the fact that now there's a property owner that's interested, has ideas, again, whether they use it or not. To me, it's kind of what I remember the town kind of asking for, and why we removed it at the time, because we didn't have kind of answers and a lot of ambiguity around that, but now, to my earlier question that you answered and this one, I think this makes sense.
Yeah, that's a good point. That's a very good point, because one of the concerns of the residents of the community, the voters, was traffic, and that's why we're doing the corridor study, to make sure that we understand the impacts of further development and the overlaying of industrial property with a greater opportunity for development. The, the traffic study, the corridor study, I think will actually help to dispel some misconceptions and give people comfort that the type of development that can occur here will not create the traffic they fear, or additional traffic can be controlled through better traffic management, truck exclusion, improved driveway, and intersections.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Shelby?
So, I just need some map help. So, on our, you can't see it here, but I'm also looking, I'm looking at the same thing. So I don't actually see ID as a zoning label on our GIS maps. What am I missing?
If you look at the entire town, you won't see it there, because it doesn't exist on this side of town yet.
Okay.
But if you look at our GIS, you should have an ID label. I'm not seeing it either, but it does exist.
I don't even see it as a label option, Jim, that's, that's why I'm...
It's, it's, it's an overlay, as opposed to the zoning.
Oh, yes, it's an overlay.
Okay. Appreciate the map 101. Thank you.
It's the...
I, I knew I was missing something, I'm going, why?
Right slash yellow line.
Okay, okay, now that I've been properly corrected here, so...
It's a good test, though. But Jim didn't see it either.
You win. Come by my office in the morning.
Sorry, I'm like, what am I... I just want to emphasize, Ian, you know, your question, because I look at this and I say, why aren't we doing this on the other side of the road? And, you know, as part of that, but, so, I would provide that feedback, Jim, you know, to the, to the planning board, to make sure that voters really understand why this is being presented this way, and then I guess I would also ask, this doesn't, by doing this, because it's multiple parcels, it happens to be owned at this time from, you know, by the same company, but it doesn't create a spot zoning type of situation?
Good question. That was my first question as well.
Okay.
It's multiple property owners. I mean, it's multiple properties, even though it's owned by one property owner.
Yep.
And Bob did a lot of casework on this one, because I really grilled him in the beginning.
Well, because that's going to come up, and I appreciate that.
I thought this was a problem, so I'll let Bob, he gets it right.
Yeah, the concept of spot zoning in Massachusetts, the courts upheld that it's, it's, it's very difficult to prove spot zoning, but if the zoning is in relation to the master plan or the development concepts of the town, then it will be upheld. And here you have an industrial corridor. Again, all the uses that are under the, the IB zone are permitted under the ID zone, the overlay, it's just that there's flexibility. So you're really not changing uses.
Yep.
It just is a, it's a, another tool that may or may not be valuable, and, you know, hopefully, the other side would adopt this, and be encouraged to see what could happen. The only caveat I would say is that we don't want to be held up.
Yeah, no, no.
Pending that.
Yeah, no, no, fully, yeah, fully understand that, and appreciate you addressing that. I'm all set. Thanks, Ellen.
Okay, thank you. Sean?
Hi, thanks, Ellen. Yeah, so I think 18, Article 18, I think, makes a lot of sense. Article 18, the, the passage of that, or I guess it coming before Fall Town Meeting, that, for the short term, holds you up, correct? Because it does, it, it's an immediate issue.
It, it, it creates, where do you put the driveways and things of that nature?
Yeah, and, and it seems very straightforward. 19 is, is not an immediate issue. I think it does raise immediate questions for you, right, about what in the future you can do with this property, but it, for this fulfillment center, does it have any...
Well, not for the fulfillment center, I will say this, that we are actively having discussions with the development of the corridor, and that would hold it up.
Okay.
Because today's world moves quickly, and, and I also think that if, and we'll have this discussion probably later on, if the town, with the support of the developer and the planning staff, et cetera, seeks to obtain discretionary funding, it's a much better story. You've created zoning, you've got a rail transit, you've done the corridor study, so you're ready to go. I hate the expression shovel-ready, but you've done the master plan, you've done all the things that you should do, and frankly, the states aren't going to look at, what is the difference in the zoning? They're going to say, the town is acting affirmatively by trying to encourage development. Sensible development.
Thank you very much.
All set?
Yep.
Okay, so all of my comments and questions have been covered by my peers, although forward-looking, not directly related to this warrant article, when we look at and consider expanding the ID along the Otis Street corridor, you know, I'll just put it out there that we don't necessarily need to take the entire IB district to do that, that, you know, having ID which does have higher buildings potentially, and looking, maybe targeting properties that aren't directed butters to residential neighborhoods, so that we minimize the impact on the residential neighborhoods. I know this is really a discussion that'll happen with the owners on the east side of Otis Street, so as the planning department, you know, looks forward and is, you know, continues to be proactive with the planning board in updating zoning, that that just be a consideration of how the ID overlay might be extended in this area as a way of, you know, just personally a proponent of maximizing the capabilities of our commercial industrial property. It's a great way to reduce the percentage of the tax levy that falls to the residential property taxpayers, but the need to do that in a way where we manage the impact on the residential neighborhoods and the character of those neighborhoods, and so much of what makes Westboro a great place to live, so.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to emphasize, granting the ID does not mean you're granting the approval.
No, I understand, but it's, it's the potential, and sometimes, sometimes the potential is just as scary or more scary than the actual plans, so.
Great.
Want to make sure that's out there.
Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And in closing, I would like to, before you vote, or whatever your recommendation, I would like to, you hear probably complaints, but I do think it's important to recognize that, I think, to a person that we've dealt with in the town through this long process, from 50 Otis through where we are today, the professionalism, the responsiveness, the thought processes that go into the dialogue have been really rewarding, so you should be proud as a town. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward.
Just, just, sorry, just to hit on, I think you said it before, but just so, folks know, we're not voting on this, we didn't have an agenda to vote for, we will not vote for it, but I think...
Right. Our intent is to vote on warrant articles and to hopefully close the warrant at our next meeting, September 28th.
Yep.
Thank you for reminding me to clarify that. So, next on the agenda is a site plan overview for 66 Otis Street, and so, let me get to So again, this is an opportunity for the site plan, for 66 Otis Street, to be presented, where we can then provide any comments, questions, or concerns, to be forward to the planning board for their consideration when issuing a special permit. While the applicant is setting up the easel and the photos for the public, the proposed development on 66 Otis Street is for 12,500 square foot microbrewery and brew pub restaurant.
So if you can just step to the podium and introduce yourself and introduce us to the project, please.
Good evening, Larry Green, McCarty Company. Here to give a brief overview for the site plan development at 66 Otis Street. I was going to give a quick background. Is it easier to go to the board or try to talk to them here and figure out how you guys like to present?
If you can speak from the podium, so that you're into the microphone, so the folks watching at home can hear.
Because you're on television.
Tuesday night?
Yeah.
It's not YouTube. So, the site's located at 66 Otis Street, just to guys, give you guys a little orientation. I know there's a lot of discussion on the, on the neighborhoods, so I'll be brief. Routenized, you're far right, oops, sorry, across the street's the car dealership, to the left is the large field with the barn. This property, you kind of see, is the property kind of colored in green. The site's approximately 2.2 acres in size. It's that, it's the property, it's got that cute little ranch and the barn in back. Site's probably relatively flat, there's a slight high point kind of in the middle of the site. Underneath the site, the soils are, you have stratified coarse sand, and kind of that, that back great corner kind of looks like a mud, that's a little, a wetland resource area back there. And then what we're proposing to do is, as you stated, we're here to propose a 12,500 square foot restaurant, and it's, that's that tan, tan rectangle in the middle. Proposing to do, wrap that around with 25 parking spaces, 38, 38 spaces are required per zoning. What we're going to do is take advantage, if you can see those kind of light green circles on the road, we kind of, want to take advantage of those existing trees and kind of circuitine the driveway through those for aesthetics, but then that driveway's also going to act as our utility corridor for electric, gas, and water on the right, sewer will come down the middle, and then, as I talk about topographically, we're going to kind of mimic that, that drainage pattern, so the front portion of the site's going to drain to an underground infiltration unit, and then in the rear of the site will flow to catch bases, vanos, and then kind of that light green upside-down seven is going to be detention basin situated in the back. Then in reference, in reference to the restaurant, I can, if you can talk, is, I'll talk, I'll do this, jump onto this first. So, if you look at the rectangle, you can kind of, simple math, divide the building into thirds. The front third's going to be the restaurant bar, about 150 seats, and kind of the middle of the rectangle will be the kitchen, kind of far left will be the, will be a little retail component, utility room, bathrooms, offices, like such, and then in the back of the building will be, will be the brewery. I can just, I can just put these up, just so you guys can see architecturally. So you can see those, that top right, that top right imagery, that's basically what you're going to see from Otis Street, you're going to have a kind of an ornamental front there, then it was kind of an industrial back for the brewery. You'll see, I'll just go, kind of, the blue is going to, the blue rectangles are the brewery itself, and if you see that upper-left image, I actually forgot to add, we are, having a little bit of site amenity, we're going to have about approximately 3,000 square foot outdoor patio, fortunately that will be covered by a trellis. You can kind of see it on the left side, and that's a quick overview.
Great. Okay, great, thank you. I'll go right to left again, my right to left, so any questions or comments, Patrick?
Six years left.
No, I don't have any questions. Okay, Ian?
No, I mean, no new questions, I think the comments that were made before about potential for the driveway and to the planning board of trying to see if we can make that work with the intersection, if possible, would be great. Worry about curb cuts and to, to, select board members Edinburgh with knowing what we have in those properties closer down to Route 9 and some issues there, so that would be my one comment on that piece. I think this is, you know, a great proposal for that area, it's something that I know as a town in EDC, from when I was on, and other members of the board have followed me, it's something we've talked a lot about, so it's exciting. I think it's something attractive, something that the town and neighboring communities want to, so no further comments besides the one about the driveway entrance and consideration of that.
Okay, thank you. Shelby?
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming before us tonight. This is a very exciting project. I think it, since it is in our packet, it's public knowledge that this would be Cold Harbor, so we should share that with the public, so that folks are aware of that. And so it's exciting that they've been a, a part of our community for many years now, I don't know how many, but I'm going to say at least five or six, it feels like, and it's exciting that they're choosing to expand here in Westboro, so I want to be supportive of that process. And I know they have a lot of fans, so. Couple thoughts for the planning board, and as, as the project is considered, I, I guess sort of aesthetically, I was a little disappointed to see the parking out front as opposed to the patio out front, sort of, as you're sort of driving by, you sort of see people sitting out there, and felt like that sort of aesthetically is a better draw than kind of off the side into the back, so I don't know if there's room there. I certainly understand, you talked about utilities, and that's not my area of expertise, but I would like the board to consider aesthetically, how can we make that more inviting, like, wow, I'm driving by and that looks like a really cool place to stop, so.
Can I, can I?
Yes, please.
Just so quickly, I'm going to go, sorry, I'm moving. So the reason we chose the patio, it's that gray, kind of gray rectangle on that location is because we wanted people to actually be able to be on the patio and actually look at some green, to look, actually look out and kind of look at, look at that green space instead of being right next to the parking lot, so that's, that was why our reasoning.
Sure, okay, okay. So, the other question I had, I presume, based on what we're seeing here, that the Cape would no longer be there?
Correct.
Right, and, and I, and I don't know, are there plans that someone could, I mean, is it just going to be demolished? I don't know the condition of it, it certainly looks like it's an excellent, my understanding was, or can it be moved? I think about affordable housing, I think, you know, I, I don't know, but...
How big is your backyard?
Not big enough, but, but seriously...
We are contemplating trailer in that, it's still, it's an option.
Okay, well, yeah, well, I, and, and again, I know that that takes finding the right person, but if that time and effort could be invested, I mean, it's, I know it's, was a well-taken care of home for many years, so to see it be reused, that would be great. And I think that's it.
Yeah. Thank you. Sean?
Well, thank you very much. Yeah, this is terrific. I, I think the one question then that everybody else has is, what's your timeline?
Great question. I guess it's really, you know, not to put the pressure, put the pressure back on the town, but it's really depending on how fluid the permitting process goes. If all goes well, we'll be, we'll be late fall construction, if it gets too late in the season, we might go into spring construction. So we're actually a design-build firm, so we'll be actually doing all the site work, and then we'll be GC in the project, so we'll be, the McCarty Company will be the sole source of this project.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. So, two quick comments, one, at the start, you mentioned the requirement is 38 parking spaces, I believe you said there were 25, it's 75?
We're proposing 75.
75, right.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to clarify that, in case...
I might have mumbled, sorry.
People weren't clear on that, so it's more in just knowing Cold Harbor, and they're following...
You could use more.
You know, their current parking lot gets full, so having the abundance of parking is, is a good thing. And then just as, reiterating Selectman Johnson's comment about as you head through with the planning board and the public hearing process for the special permitting, a site plan work, consideration of driveway with the abutting property in a way that manages the traffic well on Otis Street, makes it, you know, easier for people to get in and out of your property as well, so whatever can be done that works well together there would be appreciated.
That's the first, we've seen that this evening, so, the maybe, you know, you're, you're mixing users and mixing times, so I, I don't know if it's going to work, but we'll, we can evaluate it.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, can I just add one more?
Yes.
Thank you. So, I just, again, I think about the, what Cold Harbor offers today, and I think that folks go down there and there's some cornhole at times and what have you. Hopefully, this new site anticipates that use, and so that's kind of where I go back to the, you know, kind of the, ensuring that there's enough green space and, and flexibility for, for use of the property.
This is the green space, and then I didn't show, is we're actually going to try to... This is the green space, and then I didn't show is we're actually going to try to preserve that barn, so maybe later on it might be a cool spot for something.
Sure, yeah, yeah, great, thank you, thank you, Alan.
Okay, anything else? No, okay, thank you very much. We've got a couple of comments.
Thank you for your time.
To send to the planning board.
Yep, so the curb cuts in the driveway, looking at that, the parking location, and just looking at the aesthetics, making the site inviting, and then possible relocation of the, of the house versus demolition.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is a discussion vote on the composition of the Economic Development Committee and request to appoint new members. Page three oh five in our packet.
Three thousand five.
Yeah, thank God we have the, you can press on the.
I know. I've got to think of the agenda either.
So we, we actually, in doing some research, Sheila and I discovered that there were actually more openings on the Economic Development Committee than we had thought, so that was pretty exciting considering we had seven people for initially what we thought was one open spot, which is, you know, Zach has done a lot of great work in terms of recruiting, and I think the EDC in general is just creating a lot of excitement, so we have a lot of people who are interested in serving. So we received the seven candidates for the two open seats, but as one of the goals of the EDC was to look at the composition of the, of the EDC and what may be more appropriate, specifically around the number of staff that sit on the EDC and whether or not there should be more folks from the business community. And so at our last meeting, the EDC voted to recommend that both the chief assessor and the DPW director be removed from that committee and then replaced with, with members of the community. And so that created four open seats, so if the board were to vote to amend the composition as recommended, there would be the four open seats. And then the EDC also interviewed six of the seven candidates that are listed here, and the four, there were four that were recommended to the board for appointment. So Sean, as your representative to the EDC, I don't know if he wants to add anything.
Sure, sure, I'd be glad to add things, thank, thank you very much, Kristi. So, yeah, it was, it was an excellent meeting, I think, I want to thank our town assessor, he recommended his own removal. But we, you know, we know he will, he's free to be called upon whenever he can contribute and, and has made that clear. I think we did have a lot of strong candidates, I think one individual didn't show up for the meeting, I don't know, so that sort of helped pare the process down a little bit. Karen Henderson, who's head of Westboro TV and was an excellent candidate, sort of, you know, kind of in the meeting, offered that a, she was going to be at these meetings regardless of whether or not she was included on the committee, and so sort of, kind of offered her position to others on the committee who, who had come before the committee. And then I think, finally, I think Justin Lumberg is also an excellent candidate for this committee. He's, happens to be also, I think he's the chairman of the zoning board and on the Conservation Commission, has been involved in the master plan, so, so I think they, the thought was, well, let's give some of these other folks an opportunity, I think was really what it came down to. And we have four strong candidates, we made sure that we got a couple who have small businesses in the center of town as we start to look at sort of revitalization of the downtown and changes we want to incorporate down there, we thought that was critical to have those individuals, and, and then a couple other folks who are involved with commercial and development to sort of round out the committee and broaden, you know, the understanding and knowledge base of the committee, and so I think that's how we sort of came to the recommendations that we did for today.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from members of the board?
Yeah, I just had one question, and Kristi, I apologize if you already answered, I was fumbling getting to page three oh five. Are there any remaining representatives on this committee from your department?
Yeah, so the, the other staff that will continue to sit on the committee is myself, our community development director Fred Lenardo, and then our town planner Jim Robbins.
Okay, terrific.
Ian.
Yeah, just a quick question, I'm reading in here, but maybe, can you just comment on the town council's comment in there about the, so the view there is that we have the ability, because not, if I understood it correctly, that it's not specifically called in the charter, that the select board has the ability to kind of make these changes that we suggested here with the removals and increased numbers, so.
So this, this committee, like the country club operating committee, were both created at town meeting with appointing authority given to the select board. And so, you know, we have, there was a question about whether or not the amendment of the composition needed to go back to town meeting, and so, you know, with both the country club operating committee and then also this committee, we asked the question, and town council's response was the same, which was that because there were no bylaws around either one of those committees, you're, you had the authority to, to make these changes.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Shelby.
I just want to thank everyone that applied, I, I did watch the meeting and the interviews, and it was, it's just very exciting to see the level of interest and the broad, the diversity of the folks and their professional backgrounds and why they're interested in being on the committee, so I want to thank everyone for doing that and for the EDC for taking this, you know, taking this on, Alan, I know when you were on there, you sort of started the ball rolling, and appreciate, Sean, that you're carrying that forward, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and just, you know, one quick comment, you're really over the last, I'd say twelve to eighteen months, you know, particularly with the addition of our new economic development coordinator, the pace of activity, and with the support of town staff as well, the pace of activity of the economic development committee has been exceptional, and it's critical. You know, we, we hear constantly about, oh, we want a vibrant downtown, oh, we need to attract more business, we want the right type of business, we want healthy growth. The empty storefront program, the local rapid recovery program with the grants available, our own small business grant program has really resulted in a lot of strategic thought. The timing in conjunction with the master plan coming to conclusion has also been very beneficial. And so it's good to see, it's great to see the level of interest, it's great to see a diversity of residents and businesses being representative on the committee as well, and it bodes well for the future work of the committee to the benefit of the town. And so thank you to everyone involved and those interested in participating, and I encourage folks to stay tuned and keep an eye on what's happening there, because a lot of good things should be coming from our economic development efforts in the community development department. On that note, I'll entertain the first motion, which is to amend the composition of the Economic Development Committee to remove the chief assessor and the DPW director and include instead two additional at-large members.
Sean want to do that?
Sure. See here, I move to amend the composition of the Economic Development Committee to remove the chief assessor and the DPW director and include instead two additional at-large members.
Second, our Patrick, got it?
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing, hearing none, move to vote, all in favor, and the motion passes five zero, five being present. And Sean, would you like to make the second nominating motion as well?
Yes, thank you. I move to appoint Holly Kenny, Rod Schaefer, Mark Verro, and Mark Zeff to the Economic Development Committee.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion or comment? Seeing none, we'll move to vote, all in favor, the motion passes five zero, five being present. So welcome to those just appointed, congratulations and welcome, and thank you for, to everyone for expressing interest and being involved in the process. Okay, next on our agenda, here's a discussion vote on failed school project funding agreement, however, we are still waiting for information from the state, and so we'll be passing over that agenda item and moving to our next agenda item, which is police department presentations. So I'll ask Chief Lori and Deputy Chief Minardi to come forward.
I'll let you set this to up.
There's one we're playing. Sorry, yeah. Tom, Mike.
So just to, to start off quick, to show the, the need for, you know, staffing, I don't know if you saw out front today, three fifteen, we had an accident in front of the police station, a person was intoxicated, an arrest was made, and just since July first, we've had three hundred and twenty-six hours of prisoner watch. We're at minimum staffing today, so that means we had to order someone from the day shift to stay over to watch the prisoner until they could be bailed at seven. So what we're going to talk about today is, is all relative to the warrant articles about staffing, post, which is directly related to the lieutenant's position, and we're going to get into really kind of what we've been trying to accomplish the past almost four years. And I need to commend the deputy chief, he did some outstanding work on, on finding the data for this and putting this together. You're going to see a warrant article about an electric vehicle if the lieutenant's position is passed at town meeting. I'd like to, to thank Detective Josh Croft, one of our fleet managers, for, for doing a lot of work on that, and also Lieutenant Firefighter Patrick Cullen for providing a lot of the data. And as you can see, this is our mission statement, we strive to recruit and retain caring, compassionate and competent police officers who are committed to serve, educate, and protect our community, to provide professional services and address specific needs, present educational programs to prevent and reduce crime, to ensure a safe environment for all, and guarantee everyone's treated with dignity and respect. We need to do more proactive police work, and we just can't do that with the staffing level that we have. And you see all these projects that are coming into town, you're building it, and they're continuing to come. We could easily have more traffic officers and everything else. And like I said, I'm going to turn the presentation over to the deputy chief, and I would ask that you refrain from asking questions until the end, and then, you know, jot them down and we can answer any questions you have.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So Tom and I are deputy police chief in town. I felt it was important to have the, the mission statement up there, first off, because that really is our mission statement. It's what we've adopted, it's what we believe, it's what we strive to do. I don't know that a lot of people see it and understand it, but I think it's important. And I also felt it was important to start with this slide right here, because when we talk about staffing, this is kind of the matrix we have to go through, right? We're police, it's public safety, it's what we do, we also have to take into consideration officer's safety, we have a responsibility to our officers that are on the street to make sure that we provide them with, with the staff and the support that they need. We have to take into consideration the level of service that we give to the public, right? Of course, that's what it's all about. You know, we've, we've talked for a couple of years now that we've moved back into the forbs about the staff and, and the fact that the station's uncovered for many hours during the night. And last but certainly not least, what's the impact on the homeowner, right? What's the taxes? We understand that we are one department in the town, we're, you know, there's a lot of other departments, there's a lot of other needs, and we really want everyone to understand that we do take that into consideration. So in looking at police staffing, what I wanted to do is, you know, the town's actually done a lot of work over the last few years to, to look at a lot of different issues about what's going on in the town, and certainly staffing, there's been staffing studies done and there's been other studies done, but the first thing I wanted to look at was the strategic plan report, right? It was done in two thousand and eighteen, a lot of you were involved with it, a lot of work, and what does it say? Really, one of the top priorities, implement recommendations of the public safety needs, right? What was the success factor, proactive public safety, like the chief was just talking about, being proactive. You've heard us over the last few years talking about being reactive and proactive, certainly a few years ago, we were very reactive, we've made some progress, but I think, I think we have a long way to go. One of the other things I was looking at in, in putting this together was I, I started reading the master plan, the draft two thousand and one, as common as it can get, right? Action four point four, implement the findings of the town's strategic plan and the staffing studies. We all know that the police department did a staffing study. Back in two thousand and eighteen, we hired MRI, they presented their, their results in January of two thousand and nineteen, and I think an important thing to focus on here is this is about uniforms patrol, okay? We do understand that we've added the deputy chief's position, thank you very much. We added the traffic's position, which is another proactive approach that we're trying to take. The chief's going to talk to you later about another command staff position, which again is a proactive approach, but it's not what MRI focused on. They were very comprehensive in their report, they did look at our dashboard communities, they looked at a number of things, and one of the things we're going to talk about today is call volume. I'm sorry, I'm going to, I know you guys are pressed for time, you got a full agenda, I'm going to try to, try to move through this fairly quickly, but if you have any questions, of course. In two thousand and nineteen, this is what they recommended, five positions immediately, a total of fifteen through two thousand and twenty-four. We're not close to that. We started with two, the following year we did two, and then we did one. So we're not going to reach fifteen by two thousand and twenty-four, we understand that. That's just the nature of where we're at, we can't make up for what the pandemic created, there's, there's a lot of different issues, and again, when we go back to that, that first slide with the matrix, we understand that there's a lot of needs throughout the community, it's not just about us. So what I wanted to talk about today, and we issued, this is, again, this is just about patrol staffing, right? This is just for uniform patrol officers. We talked about the plan, the strategic plan, the master plan, MRI study, they're all still relevant. I'm going to show you in a, in another slide that we have a day shift that's one officer short, and I'll, I'll illustrate that in another slide. Lack of station coverage, shifts at minimum staffing, I'm going to, I'm going to show you what that's going to look like. And again, when we get back to officer's safety, when we get back to level of service, you know, is that, is that what we're talking about? Prison watchers, like the chief just alluded to, we're doing it right now. Emergency overtime, force ends, when we're at minimum staff and it's three o'clock in the morning and we have an arrest, it's kind of hard to get someone to come in at three o'clock in the morning, but that's something that we have to deal with. I'm going to talk a little bit about our increased workload, we're going to see how our, our call volume is still going up. An MRI call per officer's recommendation, that's, I'm going to just throw up a slide about what they were projecting and where we're actually at. And when we talk about taxes, we've been working with, with the town manager about this proposal, and we've been, we've submitted a proposal for opera funding to help increase our staffing, to get back to where we actually would have been pre-pandemic. And again, you know, there's that word again, proactive, that's where we're trying to get to. We have eight hotels in this community, I hate to say it, but there is human trafficking taking place in this town, there is drug dealing taking place in this town. And again, as the chief alluded to earlier, traffic officer, like, we get complaints every day about traffic, those are proactive positions, that's where we're trying to get to. So when we look at our current staffing levels, four to twelve shift is staffed at seven across the board, we work, our patrol shift works at four and two, so it's a six-day rotation, right? So they're at seven, and if you can see the difference between the midnight and the eight to four, you'll see those two in the middle that are up at six, the other four are at five, so that's when I talk about the day shift actually being one officer short, because one officer would fill those other four days. And the midnight is, is staffed across the board at five. In a perfect world, I would increase every single one of those. In a perfect world, I would increase every single one of those. I would increase our minimum staff from 4 to 5, and we'll talk about the minimum staffing levels right here. So in the last six months, this is what we've seen for our staff at 4. We dropped down to four officer minimum 24 hours a day. You'll see the day shift's pretty high, but again, if you, you know, if you go back to this slide, that's because they're really staffed at 5 for the most part. So if one officer takes a day off, one officer is on training, one officer calls out sick, then they're automatically down to minimum. The 4 to 12 shift's staffed at 7, so yeah, when they drop down to 4, it takes a little bit longer for them to get there. Ultimately, we'd like to raise all those levels, right, so that we would see this minimum drop down. But when we talk about level of service and we have this minimum, this is where we talk about, do we have an officer in the station when somebody walks in? No. When we have a prisoner, now we have to fill an overtime. You know, these are the issues the minimum staffing comes into play. So when we talk about increased workload, it's just, our incident reports are, you know, it's right there, are projected to increase by over 55% from 2018. And I use 2018 because that's the first data that MRI started to use. Arrest reports, I mean arrests are, you know, the data speaks for itself, I can't, you know, 144% increase over the last couple of years. And, you know, granted, you know, if you go back to 2018, we were in an office park, and we were trying not to arrest people, but we're still trying not to arrest people. You know, believe me when I say that, because when you look at this, criminal summonses, 70% increase we're projecting from 2018, a lot of these people could be arrested. You know, we choose not to arrest them. For a lot of reasons, but one of them is, you know, the officers on the road are being smart, they're being mindful of the impact it has to bring a prisoner into the station and then we have to watch them. We don't arrest people to punish them, we arrest people because sometimes someone needs to be arrested, we need to identify them, we need to fingerprint them, we need to photograph them. They're violent, we need to get them off the street. A lot of these criminal summonses could have been arrests, and I, you know, our arrest numbers would have really been much higher, much higher. So I wanted to just take a second to talk about training, because training takes time, right? That's time, a lot of times, off of the shift. We have in-service, this is a snapshot of what we did last year for in-service, this is what's required. But we feel strongly, under the chief's guidance, certainly about professional development. And this is just a small section of the kind of specialty training that we send people to, because we feel strongly about professional development, we feel strongly about succession planning, and we feel strongly about, you know, supervisors getting the proper training, and even patrolmen getting training that they would have if they were supervisors. So, you know, the question, the issue is, all that takes time, it takes time off patrol. So when we talk about calls per officer, this is what MRI projected back in 2018, obviously that's where we were. 2019, they said hire five, we hired two. Our call volume skyrocketed way beyond what MRI projected. They were projecting a 4% increase per year, that didn't happen. We hit 2020, yeah, the pandemic, things slowed down, we did add two positions. And again, I want to emphasize, we're talking about patrol positions. 2001, and this is calendar year data, okay? So we're projecting right now, we're going to be around 24,000 calls, we're at 27, we're looking at 875 calls per officer. The thing is, this is what MRI recommends, they're looking to get to the 700 range. If you look at their projection through 2024, that's what basically they were trying to accomplish. What this proposal is, is about funding three positions that we initially had in FY '21 and '22 that will cut right off the bat in our first contract negoti-, budget discussions with the finance team. So that would put us at 30. I'm willing to guess in 2022, we will at least be back to our call volume of 2019. And with a 4% increase, which MRI used, I just followed that theory, keeping with 30 officers, that's where we are, calls per officer. By 2024, we're up to 930. Assist the data, right? So what we're looking to do, and I know the board's not, I don't believe, taking any action tonight, but this is our staffing proposal, is to replace the three positions from FY '21 and '22 plus a cruiser, and, you know, I just threw that in, I'm not going to read it to you, but that's the funds criteria strictly from the treasury. And I think if we read that, we can see that that would probably fit into what we're trying to do. So this would be the funding proposal, the first year FY '22, we start in January, funding half a year of three positions plus a cruiser. We incrementally increase the budget over '23, '24, '25, and '26. And that would be, we also show the cost to the taxpayer. And just moving on for future considerations, we've talked to town manager Williams about this, FY '26, '27, and '28, those are possible increases that we could look at. It's a very fluid situation, obviously, at this point, that's just kind of a recommendation. At that point, if we follow this plan, we would be at 34 in 2028, and again, MRI projected us at 37 by FY in 2024. So that's really what I have. I'm going to pass it off to the chief to talk about the rest of the agenda items, and thank you for your time.
Jeff, do you mind if I just say one thing?
Yes.
Do you mind if I jump in? I just wanted to kind of go back to the deputy's presentation, because some of you were on the board in 2019 when he mentioned when MRI provided the recommendations. And so at that time, we also brought you our implementation plan, and the implementation plan was to put these patrol officer positions in overtime, as the deputy described, and it didn't anticipate a pandemic. And so one of the things that Kim and I, and chief and deputy have been talking about is how do we come back, and how do we bring back those positions, and what's the responsible way to do it, being, you know, as the deputy described, mindful of all the needs of the community, and then also the tax impact. And so in considering the warrant article that the chief is going to bring up and talk about right now, we wanted you to be aware of sort of the overall thought about how the staffing plan might be amended going forward. And so right now, we're talking about ARPA, and it's possible that when that comes to you, you know, that that's not the way that we go, and so I think you all know, goes without saying, that if these aren't funded through ARPA, that that plan is going to change, and so we're going to have to come back to you, because I think as the deputy's showing, there's a need, and so we're trying to be clear about how we might go about fulfilling that need. And so I just wanted to put some more context around the deputy's presentation.
So I'm going to talk to you about the command staff position and post, which is directly related, you know, I think there's a misconception that this lieutenant's position is just about body cameras or different things. This is about all administrative responsibilities in the town, the police department, and we're going to get into a lot of that. So basically, you know, we're looking, like the deputy said, succession plans and post requirements, increased supervision, reduced liability, this will allow us to have a night watch lieutenant by having this administrative lieutenant, increased supervision, reduced liability, improved response to public records requests, increased administrative responsibilities through the Body One Camera program, eviction of the videos, continued increase work towards accreditation, which goes hand in hand with post, continued increase towards detective to allocate too much time to process firearms, process court discovery motions, more distinct delineation responsibilities, improved service.
Chief, could you just, just for the public, we have it in front of us, but just define post for them in your past.
So I'm going to get into that right now.
Okay.
So post is Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission. And basically, we just went to a training conference down in Gardner, and what you have is just some brief notes I wanted you to see, and I'm just going to go through this quickly for the public, and then I can answer hopefully some questions that people have. So there's a nine-member board that's been selected, they're currently meeting, there'll be a creation of a division of police standards, no staff has been hired yet, there'll be a director and investigators, but the mandate is they have no law enforcement experience. There'll be public hearings commencing soon, subcommittees will be formed, such as Body One Camera subcommittees. And why I put that specifically in there is a quick update on Body One Cameras for your department. The cameras are in, we're still reviewing policies, the town manager and I are going to be sitting down with the unions to impact bargain very shortly. And what's very important about this is, you know, we're looking at the different policies out there, trying to have best practices, their accredited policies for the department, but we believe when post is up and running, and these subcommittees are up and running, we're hoping that the standardization through the accreditation policymaking process, where we're going to have to make changes again. So again, I'm still hoping late fall, early winter to implement the program, we do have the equipment, but there's still a lot of work, you know, to be done to do it right. Again, that is why there is such a need for this lieutenant's position, because, you know, we're not getting certain things done that we should be because of our staffing levels. So we have to stand, hopefully, they're going to be giving us standardized background checks, we have to provide a summary of the background check to be sent to the training council to include, be included in their academy packet. The MPTC is to create a policy regarding background checks that will be reported to the post commission. Autism training will be mandated by the MPTC, fair and impartial training mandated, we're already doing that. December 1st is slated for the standard training program relative to use of force, an act requiring critical incident intervention by emergency services provider. We're involved with District 14, we have an officer, one of our officers, Officer Kearney, who's a part of that, and that's when there's a critical incident, that we debrief the officers and make sure that they're not just physically sound, that they're mentally sound. The two-day school resource officer certification program, that's going to occur, Detective Dappleit will attend that September 20 and 21. The S.R. roles will have a higher level of training mandated by the MPTC, and is currently in development. Post will certify officers for three years. Those needing bridge academies, which a lot of our reserve officers who work details will need that training, that will begin in October, and it's all by your name, so you can read this, but basically A through H, you have till June 30th to get your certification or you're done, and then it goes through, you have two years for the next group, and then three years. The post commission can audit internal affairs records at any time, and there's a deadly force exception relative to shooting at moving motor vehicles, but no deadly force exception is released to chokeholds. The Department of Public Health reporting review on use of force concerning serious injury to death. So that means whenever there's an injury, we have to report that to the state, and that's going to be the job of this lieutenant, to make sure all those things get done. The post commission will qualify, certify agencies and officers who can act, and they can act on an officer's license. Agencies continue to conduct internal affairs investigations and a summary of the process sent to post with findings. Post can conduct additional inquiries and take independent action, suspend, revoke an officer's license. So I suspend an officer for, say, two days, the officer accepts that suspension, post reviews it, they do their own investigation, and they say, hey, we're going to decertify that officer for 30 days. So there's a lot of things that are up in the air that are going to be interesting for us in the future. Physical fitness standards will be implemented that we must adhere to annually or biannually. Unprofessional conduct is yet to be defined. There are many unanswered questions by post, accreditation, policy and procedure updates, Body One Camera initiatives, post mandates alone will justify the absolute need to add an administrative lieutenant to the department. So this is the responsibilities, you know, post requirements, I mean, this is brand new and it's still a work in progress. The accreditation, you know, process, Body One Camera initiative, he's going to be a grant administrator, public records officer, firearms licensing, solicitor permits, basically, you know, it's going to be an extremely busy position. And I can see in years to come, me coming for the board saying, hey, I have to have an administrative lieutenant, because it's just the work overload's unbelievable. Court discovery motions. Hours are spent every week putting together booking videos, 911 calls, you know, never mind redacting these Body One Camera videos, it's going to be, you know, like I said, even holding cell inspections. So this is the estimated cost, we're looking at a November 1st start date for this, just so you can see a snapshot in what the cost is to the taxpayer, like I said, this is a warrant article. And I want to get to... Chief, can you go back to that for one second? Sorry, just wanted to look at the costing. A little too quick. Which slide? That last slide, it's all right. It's turning around to look.
Other presentation?
Yeah? No, the other presentation, no. Oh, I'm sorry, you want the, I'm sorry.
Just the cost of the lieutenant.
Can't see it very well there, so. It's going to be the last one, yep. Yep, there we go. Thank you. You're welcome.
So that just shows that, obviously, the impact to increasing the budget for this fiscal year, and then the additional cost for the full year, so we experienced that a lot with the pandemic positions that we added halfway through.
And this is taking into no account ARPA yet, right?
Right, so this is just for the lieutenant position, which is not proposed to be an ARPA-funded position.
So it's total of 14 and change.
Yeah.
Just so I have understood.
No, sorry, no, I just had to think about it for a second.
So when we talk about this vehicle, if the lieutenant's position is not approved, we will not be going forward with this vehicle, but we're kind of excited for this, and I'll explain why. So we went out and we looked at the Tesla, we looked at the Ford, I liked the Ford for a couple of reasons, and I confirm this with our DPW director today, Chris Payant. If we purchase a Tesla, everything has to go through Tesla. So if you brake light, taillight, it has to go through Tesla. I have a friend of mine who's waiting three months for, you know, taillight. Where Ford will give us the part, and if DPW can do the repair, they will, so there will be huge savings there. And also, it's, most of our fleet is Ford, so we're staying with that same brand, and I have to say, image-wise, driving, us driving a Tesla versus a Ford, I think it'd be more accepted by the public. So for those reasons, and like I said, drove them both, both excellent vehicles, I recommend the Mustang Mach-E. And the differences are, between the XLT that I drive now is basically, you know, this is new to the market, and it's obviously a direct competitor, and, you know, the Explorer obviously is easy to outfit, you know, it's a work in progress right now, Topsfield PD just purchased one, so we're kind of waiting to see how they do things to figure out what we're going to do if this passes. The MSRP on this is a little over 60,000, there's some grants that go right to the dealership for 7,500, for a total cost of 52,72920. If you look at the Ford, if you, this is the Ford gas-operated Explorer, if you go to the hybrid, add $5,000 to that. So when you look at all these slides with what comes to funding, add 5,000 if we're talking, so it's really not as bad as it looks compared to the XLT. So the uplift on this is 15,353, the reason for that is we're going to have probably less lighting in there, obviously, and it's totally outfitted. And it's totally outfitted with a total cost of 68,08220. And again, if you went with the hybrid, you'd add 5,000, it would go to 61. So the Mustang Mach-E, what are the benefits? Cheaper, long-term costs, Explorer's cheaper upfront, cost per miles is less. On the Mach-E, maintenance costs are much, much lower. No oil changes, there's no exhaust system, there's no transmission, you know, basically, it's gonna be a lot less to operate. And again, no emissions from the vehicle. Obviously, the Explorer familiarity and there's no range anxiety. You know, there's gonna be some nervousness with this, especially in the winter, not knowing, you know, what's that battery charge gonna be. They're saying 270 for the Mustang Mach-E. They're testing out, I believe, at 304 right now, 304 miles. So, you know, hopefully, it'll be, it'll be fine. And I'll talk about the charging at the station as well. Just wanted to give you an overview after five years. We have a 2008 Ford Explorer that's got 100 and something thousand miles on it. We believe that these vehicles are gonna be in the fleet for a very, very long time. So we think that it's gonna be cost-effective in the long run to go with an electric vehicle for administrators and detectives. Obviously, I give you the cost per mile, the maintenance, and you can see the five-year estimated cost, you know, is much higher than the other vehicle. Again, when we get to 10 years, we really are, we're starting to see that, you know, obviously, it's cheaper to operate. And we believe they will be there for a while. And then in 15 years, I think these vehicles will be around then. It's a significant savings. And again, just showing you vehicle comparison over time. So, you know, up to 120,000 miles in 10 years, obviously, we're saving money. Why haven't we adopted it already? Lack of available cars. You know, even now, we ordered two hybrids at Springtown meeting. We haven't received them yet. So it's, you know, with what's going on, it's gonna take a while. And these cars, they're definitely, we're seeing people are really getting excited for them. This greater initial cost, the range anxiety, lack of uplifting ability with emergency lighting and mounting, we're working on that now. And infrastructure, PD's not able to sustain the charging, and I wanna get into that. But why now? Westboro's a strong push, greener transportation. We would like to be an example in town that these vehicles can do the job. They can be less expensive to operate and they can be suitable substitutes for internal combustion engines. Their tax credits and rebates, available test, defray some costs, as well as assisting installing charging infrastructures in town. So the charging needs, so you can plug it in the wall and then for every hour, you get three miles. So, you know, obviously, that's really not an option. Supplied 240V charger, it's a little better. But we're looking at the Ford Connect charger. And that, basically, we would charge, I would charge the car, you know, four hours a day, a couple of days a week, and we should be fine. And then you have the Electrify America, and this is what they look like. So the cost for this is basically 2,000 for the wiring and then 700 for the Ford Connect charger. We're looking at doing one of two things. One, installing it in the garage of the PD, or two, installing it as a designated parking space outside under the canopy. And this is what I think is very important, that we need to really think about. Impact on the environment. And, you know, the Mach-E emits zero, zero grams CO2, where the Ford Explorer and Sustainable Western's gonna do some actual data for us, because our car's idle so much, it's not the norm. So we think that 386 is gonna be much, much, much higher. So the total cost, vehicle and charging solution is 70,88120. You know, there are other things we'll look at to reduce costs. I know we had a, we purchased a vehicle, a hybrid, and we received a grant of 5,000. We didn't need it, it went back to the town. So if we don't utilize all this funding, you know, we'll, we'll give it back. You know, we, we're trying to be as, you know, fiduciary, as responsible as we possibly can. And that's pretty much our presentation. Wanted to really kinda give you an update on POST, there's just a lot to it. There's a 139-page document that I'm still reviewing that I'm sure people are gonna want me to be able to regurgitate. It's just, there's so much going on, I can't thank so many chiefs out there. I mean, we're meeting weekly about these things. Deputy and I just went to a recent conference. You know, we'll be going to our Norwood in service, and I'm sure this will be a major talk will be posted. And we're just trying to keep up right now. And, you know, we've fallen behind a little bit because of the staffing and because of the command staff level that we have right now. It's a definite needed position. I'm hoping that the community supports us on this endeavor. And in the process, we'll, you know, purchase a fully electric vehicle, you know, for the town. And we have five, when these two come in, we'll have five hybrids. And I don't know of an agency our size that have five hybrid vehicles in the fleet. So we're committed, you know, to going green wherever we can. And if you have any questions for the deputy right or for Detective Croft, who's in attendance today, we'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
Alan? Go ahead.
I'll just mention, and chief, I don't think I heard you say it, so I'll just give you the plug. The chief presented and team presented to Sustainable Westboro last night, and we did vote to support the electrical, electric vehicle. So that was, I think, a positive piece, and I certainly endorse, you know, us going green and the chief having a vehicle that is green. So it's a good, good positive step in the right direction.
Okay, great. Any other questions for the chief or the deputy about any of the presentations?
Yeah.
Sure, just so I understand it, on the patrol officer side, so maybe it's for the deputy, but the number increased, the three now, did I see that correctly? That, that, the plan is to stay with that over the next, was it two or three years? And then look for the incremental staffing? Is that what?
Yeah, so that's what, that's what we worked through with, with Tom Manager Williams, was to make up the three, basically, that we were going to get and to get them right away. And then to, you know, through the ARPA money, kind of slowly roll that into the budget over, you know, through FY '26. And then start back into what, somewhat what our original plan was.
Okay.
Basically, you know, originally, it was one and a half a year is basically what we were trying to accomplish. And, you know, with the pandemic, obviously, that wasn't gonna work out. So we're trying to get that three back and then incrementally increase the budget so that that's absorbed back in and then start the hiring process over. It definitely hurts to go three years. I'll let the chief speak.
And I can't promise you that I won't come before you and say, I need help. And I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the staff that's across the street. I mean, they're doing an unbelievable job, and it's been very difficult. And, you know, when we talk about not arresting people, we have a jail diversion program. We have a clinician in the cruiser that's a grant-funded position. We're doing everything we can, thinking outside the box, to provide a level of service that's second to none. But you need tires that meet the road, and it's all too often that we're running just too short. And that's the problem. And it really bothers me, as Judge Chief, Westboro, that the building's dark. You know, I came in the other morning, Saturday, came in super early to prepare for the 9/11 ceremony. And it's, I'm walking in and it's, there's no one there. It's me, you know, and it's, I don't like that. If you're a citizen and you need help and you need someone in that police station to help you, there's no one there, you know, after the day shift. And that's, that's just wrong. And I, first and foremost, I have to have the officers on the road to respond to the calls. So I can't promise you that I won't come before you in FY '23, '24, '25 and say, I need some help. I mean, people can just say no, just like they can say no to this lieutenant's position, and we're gonna do the best we can. I've said this 1,000 times with what we have. You know, you have a professional agency that's committed to providing a very high level of service, and we're gonna be as transparent, you know, as we can. I'll answer anyone's questions. You know, obviously, I always am open to suggestion. But we're doing our best, you know, through the command staff, the deputy and I, to ensure a public safety service that is, that is exceptional. But we're very, very reactive. And, and I'm not, I'm not happy with that. I'm not comfortable with that as a chief. I know the deputy's not either. And I know the staff wants to do a lot more proactive investigations. I mean, some of the things I've seen, and I don't wanna scare people, some of the reports that I read, in Westboro, it's crazy. It's, it's really is, so. But I'll just leave it at that. And, but that's the reality.
I just wanna speak to that. So the, the implementation plan that was brought to you in January 2019 was strictly patrol, and I think they've been really clear about that. At the time, we didn't talk, I mean, I think it's, it was within the study, but we didn't talk about the implementation of the lieutenant or when that would come. I think the chief has, has made it pretty clear that that time is now and it's needed. And so the, the implementation plan is just that, it's a plan. Being mindful of how three officers immediately would impact the budget. You know, I think the discussion that we have had is that it's an incremental increase. It's similar to how the safer grant worked in the fire department. There was an incremental increase over time. And so I think, you know, given everything that we know, but also understanding the immediate need, that's the plan. And so, but I think we wanna be honest about the fact that it is a plan. However, we think, I think it's a good plan at this point. And obviously, like we said, if ARPA, if the ARPA proposal doesn't get approved, then we need a new plan. And, and so you'll see that shift considerably.
I mean, no one could have imagined a pandemic, never mind the social reform that we're dealing with right now as a, as a police department. And, you know, we're embracing all this, we have to. And, you know, we just need, you need tires to get the job done.
Thank you. Patrick? Yep, all good.
So on the staffing piece of it, first of all, I'd like to thank you and Deputy Chief for doing the work you've done on that. I'm glad to see that the position, the lieutenant position is really focused towards proactive activity. That's really important to me, especially as we look at the situation we are with COVID and the, and the, and the people of the town. So I'm thrilled to see that piece, and I'm, it's a real positive step forward for me in the police department. So great work, and I look forward to seeing the benefits of it.
I do.
Shelby?
Yep. So, thank you again, echoing the thanks for the presentation. Certainly would love a copy. I'm sure we'll get all of those, since we don't have them in our packet. I, Christy, I don't see, unless I'm missing it, the request for the three officers as an article. What am I missing?
It's not, it's not an article. It's, it's an ARPA proposal. So it's not an approval by town meeting.
Okay. Okay, so it would stand alone and it would come before us as, for funding in whatever year three?
No, so it's a...
Year two.
No. So, so the ARPA proposals will come to you off cycle of town meeting.
Okay.
And this is one of them. And so with vetting through the finance team, your board, and also the finance committee, you would choose which, which proposals you wanted to move forward with using the ARPA funding. If, and so you'll see that in the proposal form. The deputy has included that, the full amount of that incremental cost over the...
Yeah, I just need to see those. Yep, okay.
So that, so that request isn't, that request isn't before you tonight? But I guess the point is, is that when that does come to you, if it doesn't get approved, you'll, you will see requests for additional officers at subsequent town meetings.
We just wanted you to see our, our plan, our hiring plan. If it's not approved, we'll come back with another plan.
Yep, right, I understand. Oh, good, sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, what we wanted was, because the plan had to shift so much because of the pandemic, the original plan for the addition of officers, we wanted you to see the full picture in the context of this article, the lieutenant article.
So broader picture, stepping back from the police request, do you anticipate we'll see multiple ARPA requests come before us, or are we gonna get these incrementally?
No, they'll all come to, no. So the, so the process that I had described was that the finance team is working on evaluation criteria. They'll, we'll rate them. You'll see all of them, but we'll recommend to you which ones we think should be approved.
Okay.
So.
So I don't have any other questions about the information that was presented. I would, I probably will, once I have a chance to digest what was before us. Regarding the electric vehicle, did you factor in, I mean, I would imagine you'd need a charging station at your residence, too?
No.
No?
So we've talked about that. I mean, if I had to plug it in at home, I would, you know, I'm not gonna send a bill to the town.
Big orange extension cord.
But I, I think, I think with the driving that I do, I'm, because I'm gonna test this vehicle, I think that I'll be able to charge it at the station. And if I have to go somewhere to charge it, I'll do that. You know, if I go to a conference that's far away and I need to charge it to get home, you know, I'll, I'll charge it at a charging station.
Okay.
Will the chargers at the golf club fit this vehicle?
I'd have to, I would assume they do. I would assume they would work. I know we're, we're hearing, Detective Croft is telling me even Tesla's, their rapid chargers, they're, they're gonna convert them so other, you know, all-electric vehicles can utilize that. So I, I mean, I think it will work. I do, time will tell. The hybrids are working, so.
And when we put the canopy up, we don't have solar on the canopy, correct?
No, we don't. And the issues with that are, and just I'll be brief, I know your meeting's going along, is I know Lester PD, they had the solars in the roof and the snow came right off and crushed like a bunch of their, most of their fleet. And then they put the guards up and it still went over it and damaged their cruisers. So I don't know if that's something we could do on there, unless the technologies change where they can make sure that, you know, you're not gonna have, even now, we're having issues now that need to be rectified with that canopy, with snow coming off.
Okay, thanks.
Sean?
Thank you, Chief and Deputy Chief. I think you both made compelling cases tonight, and you know, and of course, with the ARPA money, there's, there's a lot of proposals out there, so we need to consider all of those before a decision can be made. But, you know, I remember the original police staffing studies way back when, and we are way behind what was recommended there. So, you know, certainly, I, I feel for what you're telling us this evening. So, you know, looking forward over the next month or so to review all those proposals and get back to you.
And just to remind everyone, that staffing plan's still up on our webpage, if you wanna take a look at that, you know, those watching at home.
Okay. I don't have any additional questions or comments at this time, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, deputy, and thanks to the entire team that works, you know, has been working behind the scenes on the data, the planning, the research. There's clearly a lot that's gone into these, so thank you.
I've got a great crew. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is a presentation from the fire department. There are warrant articles and discussions, so invite Chief Purcell.
Good evening and thanks for having us. I'm Patrick Purcell, serving as your fire chief here in the town of Westboro. Along with me is Deputy Fire Chief Jason Thursky. I'm gonna present Article 12, and he's gonna present Article 13 tonight. And the reason I started with this slide at the beginning, this is the original fire station where our parking lot and 9/11 memorial is. That was constructed in 1888. And part of this article, well, the purpose of this article involves fire alarm infrastructure. Within the confines of this building, there was a fire alarm room. And between the construction date of this building in 1888 and 1900, they actually had already began stretching some of the wire and the infrastructure that is around town today. I'm not 100% sure, but there, if you look closely by the tower there, you can actually see some wire stretching away from the building. Next slide. So within the town, the wire itself is a dirty copper. It's not the profitable scrap-type copper that is stretched on a lot of our roadways. And what that wire did was, when we had occupancies in town that wanted to tie into the municipal fire alarm system, and I'm not 100% sure, because none of us were around when they started this program, I, I don't know if it was optional or mandatory, they would wire the red hole boxes that you see to a lot of buildings. And at one time, I believe, we had over 200 of them. And I'll get to what we've, what we've been doing since, since I became your chief. And at one time, I believe we had over two, two hundred of them. And, uh, I'll get to what we're, what we've been doing since, since I, I became your chief, uh, in, in a minute. So when somebody pulled a box or a fire alarm went off, it would trip that box in a building and it would run through that dirty copper wire through town into the fire station and it would tap out bells. And it would do like two bells, then a pause, then four bells. And we used to know box two, four, one, one will ring in and we know that was the Mill Pond School. So that's, and it would tap out on paper and the firefighters back then would come down and look at how many, how many, so that, that's how they recite, receive fire alarms. And believe it or not, at some point they got a decoder, but we used that system, you know, faithfully, and it worked well up until about two thousand and six. Two thousand and six, we upgraded to what we call radio boxes and those same signals no longer went through the dirty copper line. They would transmit it to radio waves and we have, uh, a receiver for that at the fire station that would decode all the information. Still tap out the same, same box numbers and we would know. Uh, the reason for this slide is, and I'll, I'll draw some attention to the middle of that pole, and I'm sorry, I, I looked better on my computer screen, right? Uh, up, up a little, right there, up down. There. So that, see how that has a wire wrapped around and it shoots out and it's cut to your left? So that's part of our infrastructure. That means some of that wire is already missing. I want to stay on this slide for one second. The reason why I'm coming to you today to ask for the funding at town meeting to remove all of the wire in town is we have been piecemealing this since I've become the chief because as you see, we have double poles in town. We have some where they've cut the pole up high and left it. That's, uh, pretty much our fault. Uh, there is a, a hierarchy of wiring on poles. And to start at the bottom, you'll see fiber optics. Some of it we own and we have labeled, uh, fiber optics that the school owns. They have cable TV, Verizon, uh, Spectrum, then us. And then you get into the, the bad stuff, all the national grid stuff. At one point, we started working on taking the wire down ourselves and we purchased a bucket truck. And if you look at that pole right there, or you want to go to the next slide? Okay, there's another good example on, on my right. We, we have no business in that space. Okay, well, that we're asking for a problem, nor are we certified through OSHA to be working in a bucket truck. And, uh, that's just not, not something we should be, we should be doing. We are not even one hundred percent sure. Every time I turn around, I find more wire. So when they do a, when DOT does Route Nine, they find some that cross Route Nine. So we're trying to pace out when no traffic's coming, cut a wire and drag it across the highway. Can't happen. So we estimate, we're estimating that we have about ninety-four thousand feet of cable left out there. We had taken down, we think about ten, ten to fifteen percent. Um, we got a, one flat rate. I wasn't willing to do an hourly system for, for a company to take it down. I mean, if I wasn't at a company, I'd be here for like five years and, you know, it would cost you a lot. So the, the one company that we found that could take it down, can we go to the next slide? Is FiberTech and Safety. Now, obviously I have to get two more quotes because this is between the ten and fifty thousand. I will try my best to get two. I will, I will have to get two more, at least solicit two more quotes. Uh, it should not be more than that. I mean, that's probably the bare, bare minimum we're going to need right there for just this project. Um, what, what they have agreed to do is take all of our wire and also the boxes that you saw up there, those also have to come down also. And until all of our stuff is out of the way, nobody else will take wire above us. So whenever there's roadwork, rewiring done, a pole moved, a pole hit in a car accident, they, they just cut it, cut it and leave it unless, unless our stuff is out of the way. So the quote, he goes for nineteen thousand dollars to remove all of our wire. And, uh, the reason we are asking for thirty thousand is we're required to provide a dumpster and disposal and also police details. I'm, I'm being completely honest with you. I am roughing the amount of money on police details. And I know about, I know about how fast they work. I don't think we need a police detail on some of these, like, uh, the road into fifty-seven Brigham Street. There's a, there's, there's no traffic there. But on Route Nine, they certainly need the services of the police department to, to protect them. Do I have another slide? Nope. That's really the, the meat and potatoes of that whole, that whole project is National Grid emails Christie and I all the time telling us our wire's in the way. And, uh, we do our best when FiberTech's doing some work in town to get it down. A thousand here, a thousand there, to get, to get some stuff down. But at the end of the day, I would just like your support to get it done and gone and, and over with. We don't use it anymore.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Sure.
Patrick?
Chief, thank you for bringing this attention. I had no idea that this was out there. So this is great to hear and I certainly support cleaning up the poles and beautifying the community with it as well. The thirty, I'm just wondering timing wise, this might be a question better for you, Christie. Uh, timing wise for the warrant, you, you've gotten one quote. Do we need those second and third quotes in order to get the more, I'll say, exact number for a warrant article? How does that timing work for you all?
Well, if, assuming that the chief gets two more quotes, they would only, he would go with his lowest quote. So having the one, you know, if, if it's the, the, and he's basing his article on the one, it would only go down. I, though he did mention that he's estimating the, the police detail because we're just not sure.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, in my experiences, we're not going to get a cheaper price than that, but I'm certainly going to try.
Okay.
That's, to take down ninety-four thousand feet of wire, working in those messes.
Yeah.
That's not.
It's dangerous work, so I totally get what you're saying. Yeah.
Ian?
Um, just a quick question. Called a dirty copper wire, not the stuff that people steal. But is there any salvage value for the copper? You said we have to get a dumpster. Is there any money we potentially could get from salvaging the wire?
I think that was the original tent of the town and the fire department when we first started doing that. I think we were onto the impression it was good fiber. But we don't even have the ability to strip the sheathing off of the outside. So I think that the, when they first started to do that, the cash in value was not worth the time spent to get the coating off the outside so we could recycle it. Uh, I, I believe that's what happened. A, a lot of this stuff happened. Well, obviously the project started over a hundred years ago, but even when they started taking it down, I mean, to my knowledge from what I heard, this is why they stopped because it wasn't, it wasn't worth the, the money that they paid people to strip it down to actually cash it in. I think it was, I believe it was still a loss. I believe that's what I was told.
Thank you.
Shelby?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chief. Um, so just to be clear, this is not just a matter of aesthetics. We've actually been asked by National Grid and what we're seeing in the warrant articles that it, this is in some ways maybe prohibiting replacement of, uh, poles.
Yes, one hundred percent. That is exactly what's going on. That's what started the whole conversation.
The opportunity to kind of upgrade at, not at our expense, right? Because that's an expense that National Grid takes on, right? To upgrade infrastructure. Right. Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
Sean?
I'm all set. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
As am I. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Necessary.
The chief's always a tough, uh, presentation to follow behind.
No pressure.
He also had the tangential objects.
If anyone in khakis and a uniform, I mean, a, a capris, right? That was the last presentation you gave to us.
I was trying to find a way to work something into that, but it's computers and I'm kind of outside my realm.
Yeah, okay.
I'm going to go with, uh, the presentation that I have going on. So, uh, the chief's giving me the privilege to speak on Article thirteen, which is a computer software upgrade. I think to give you a little bit of idea of why we're at where we're at, um, going back from the beginning of time till probably about nineteen ninety-four, everything was written, uh, and recorded at the fire department in paper. So there's logbooks, there's journals, there's handwritten notes from fire chiefs fifty years ago that said that I okayed this. And then in nineteen ninety-four, they introduced a primitive software, which was four D client. And that kind of just, it was more of an incident reporting software. It allowed us to be able to, uh, kind of communicate to the state some of our data. It had some capabilities of tracking, training and equipment, but it was very, I guess by today's standard, I would call it primitive or archaic. It was, uh, spreadsheets that weren't user friendly. You could input information in, but it never came back the same way you put it in and you could never find it. We were fortunate enough that we had, uh, one of our firefighters is pretty well versed in four D client, so we were able to kind of Band-Aid our way through. In about two thousand sixteen, um, when the need was to relocate the dispatch center and the fire chief said, yeah, we'll take it. We looked at IMC, which is the, the current software that the police department uses and we're like, we think we can make it work. And we tried, we tried really hard to make it work, but it's really designed for law enforcement. It's not designed, designed for the fire service. So it really operates one component of our organization, but it hasn't helped us out with all the many other components that we, um, that we're trying to tackle. So, uh, if we go to the next slide. So what are we looking to do? It's, and they've really grown in popularity in the last probably ten years, fire-based programs that are designed and, and modeled around the fire service. So what's this program going to accomplish for us? It's going to basically become our hub that all of our other programs are eventually going to build off of. So pre-planning, um, this is one area in ISO that we fell short on. Um, it's very difficult for us to get out there and pre-plan all of these communities. This program takes the assessors database, pulls it in, uh, and essentially helps us create pre-plans for all of our structures. It's going to increase, uh, the points that we're going to receive on ISO. Um, so that's a huge, um, cost savings in the end. Again, it's getting us closer to that ISO one, uh, rating that we're looking for. Emergency response, again, um, it's dealing with MDTs, um, over the other terminals and the vehicles. Currently, under IMC, we have to operate it on a, a personal computer platform, so a little laptop computer in front of the truck. It's very difficult to see. It's very difficult to operate. Again, IMC not being user friendly. The officers will try to pull up information regarding to the building that they're going to, whether it be hazards, um, chemicals that are involved in the property, the closest water supply in the event that we need to tap into, um, the water supply. All of that stuff is very difficult to pull out of the system. And the biggest complaint we get from our offices is that the IMC window is like this big on the truck. So at three o'clock in the morning in the pitch dock bouncing down the road, they can't read it. This software program allows us to switch over to the tablet form, um, which is a little bit more user friendly. It's also, um, all the imaging behind the building is either based off of the GIS data or, uh, a Google platform. It's a little bit easier for us to pull up images and, uh, identify hazards and locations and stuff. Uh, so it's a little bit more user friendly for the fire officers that are responding every day. Fire prevention links in everything else that we're doing. So it is, um, it's based on Patriot Properties, which is the assessors database, which is also PermitPro, um, which is the permitting software that we use, um, jointly with the building department and all the other inspection services in town. So it kind of pulls in our data from there. Uh, it doesn't, right now, there's a gap in that data or the bridge of that data. So we have it over here, over here in this silo, but only the people in prevention can see it. Nobody else in the department can see it or pull it up. Community Connect, I'll talk about at the end because I think that one's kind of neat and we're not a hundred percent sure we're going to go with that yet, but it's, um, it's, it's pretty jazzy. Incident reporting, so this is a, a neat version of the incident reporting. So all the systems that we operate under right now are very, uh, primitive and don't, um, you know, there's four hundred boxes that you have to check off. And if you check off the first box, you still have to check off the other three hundred and ninety-nine boxes. This program, when you pick the first box, it takes all the irrelevant stuff out and just makes it so that the pertinent stuff that's relative to that type of call um, is what they have to answer. So it's going to streamline it a little bit for, uh, fire officers that are doing these reports on a daily basis. Scheduling, it's going to allow us a little bit of flexibility as far as how we schedule things. Um, so right now, everybody has to go into that IMC software, which is not user friendly. It's not accessible from home. So if, if, uh, currently if a shift officer has someone that says, hey, I want to put in for vacation time, that officer has to call into the station, get somebody that's in front of the computer, pull up this information, try to figure out, okay, I'm at, I'm at, how can I do this and all that? A lot of the groups have their own Google calendars. There's no, like, there's no rhyme or reason who's doing what or how they're doing. This will allow them to be able to kind of access and have availability to, to view the schedule in real time as opposed to the worrying about errors and, and omissions from not being able to have it all, uh, related together. Personnel records, it allows us a better way to track personnel records. Um, and then another big component is training records. So ISO, um, we, we fell short on some points of ISO and a lot of it had to do with the ability to retrieve documentation. We're doing the training, but they don't like the format that we're presenting it in. So part of our challenge is overcoming that is that, again, this will allow us to categorize it correctly, to be able to pull up reports a little bit easier and, uh, essentially kind of give us those points that we're missing. The Community Connect one, this is a neat one. This is one that the chief is very passionate about. Um, this is another opportunity for the, for us to engage the community as well as business owners. So, um, this is one that they're in the process of releasing out. So it's, and all of the parameters aren't fully defined, but essentially what it's going to be on a simple level is that we'll be able to reach out to a business owner and say, hey, listen, you got to update your site file. So you got to give us your contact information. You got to give us any new hazards associated with the building, uh, and update in the, in the computer system real time so that that information, uh, carries through to everybody, the responding agencies, the, um, fire prevention, um, and any other, uh, resources that we need, dispatch. And a residential structure, we can reach out to a resident and say, okay, hey, you have the ability to upload this. So you can say, I have a, a secure key box over here. It's located on this side of the thing, on, on the, on the side of my building. You can give us the garage door code. You can put relative information that I have, uh, uh, a mobility impaired individual living on the second floor that's going to need help in the event of, of, uh, an emergency. So all of that information, so it's not just us going out to actively engage and, and, and pull this information back. It's being, letting the community be proactive and feeding us this information, but not getting lost in translation. So it's getting directly into the computer system. So it's basically taking all of our scattered stuff and putting it into one system that's designed for us. Cyber security is a big thing, so, uh, I'm, I'm going to be speaking while outside my whale house on this, so I'm going to try to wow you with the, especially Alan. So it's, uh, it's no, there's no service, so we're not responsible for maintaining anything. That, that's all on, um, first to. It's very difficult to hack into the systems that are cloud-based as opposed to the systems that we have, uh, in place. Although we have good, good security measures in place, we're increasing that. Uh, again, hosted on an SSAE sixteen type two audit covered data center.
Alan likes that.
That sounds good. Yeah, I like that. It's, it's, so, so, so for everybody else, uh, what does that mean? It means Systems and Organization Controls Report, um, the AICP developed an auditing, reporting, assessing how well organizations handle data security, system privacy, data confidentiality and data processing. Get that right? So basically, it's how they're hardening their facility. Um, and then the other big advantage we have with, um, going to the cloud is that we have very little downtime. And usually our downtime would be scheduled, um, through, uh, the system administrators. So all benefits that are, are hardening and securing our data better. So what's our expected outcomes and go, and goals? We're looking to enhance safety for our frontline personnel that are responding. It's giving them the data in real time. Uh, a big goal and it's been a mission of the fire chief, right? And we've gone from a four to, to a two, which is a huge, um, in the words of ISO, that's usually unheard of. Um, we think that we're very close to being able to reach that, uh, ISO one rating. It's approved efficiency and operations of the department across all levels. It's coordinating everything into one, uh, one bucket. Again, we're improving the quality of our technology. We have a tendency of holding on to stuff that's, uh, you know, antiquated probably by fifteen, twenty years. This gets us onto the cutting edge. Uh, one other component that I, I failed to mention is that, uh, we're looking at using this program also potentially down the road for, uh, ambulance reporting. So right now we have a, another third-party vendor that's used for ambulance software. They're in the process of releasing the first, uh, versions of their ambulance reporting software. So hopefully the hopes is that we can get it all again into one, one bucket, one, one vent, one program. And then again, we're enhancing our redundancy, resiliency and security of all of our data. I think that was the end.
That's it.
Any questions? Sean?
Yeah, thank you very much. That looked great. Recently, we had a presentation, folks from the state came in talking about regional dispatch and the potential for that. And that sounded also very exciting. If that comes to fruition, sort of, what does that mean for this dispatch system? Would it be used with that or?
So I, I think that in, in the end, as that forms, depending on which direction, um, as that starts to, to take shape and takes life, um, the, the parties that come to the table will have to come to an agreement as far as what software they're going to use. Uh, the good news is, is that this is pretty much considered, uh, the gold standard. Um, this is a comprehensive program and it's one that's appealing and, um, would most likely, the majority of our partners are probably going to want to transition to this. There is a slim chance that they, out of, out of the blue, they may go left and we're, we're trying to go right. But we'd be able to mold either way. Our system would be able to be transitioned over to that, um, whichever direction, uh, the regional clinic goes.
Yeah, just one more thing. So when the consortium of communities that engage.
So when the consortium of communities that engage in the regional dispatch, if that even happens, decide on something else, we don't pay for the something else. So if they decide to throw this out the window, the state pays for the upgrade of everything again. We think this is the gold standard. I had a conversation with them today. There's already several communities around us that are transitioning over to Worcester-Shrewsbury, and then some farther away, Weymouth. Yeah, I gave me like eight of them.
To this, to this product as well.
This is becoming the gold standard. The Foxborough Center that we looked at, this is becoming like the gold standard because of its resilience. And it's really allowing people to do away with a lot. We have so much, so many different platforms that we run off of the different things. One thing that we forgot, we forgot to present, and it's my fault. They're developing ambulance software also. We have AmbuPro. We're looking to bring that into this also and trying to get rid of everything else. That's really our priority.
Got you. Because I think one of the big conversations around the regional dispatch was the, I think, one or the other, the North Shore, maybe they talked about the issues they'd had, sort of trying to come together. And a lot of it was software-related, so potentially, this could help that process?
Sure. And one of the, one of the communities in this already is using this. So I just, I really believe it's got to be the standard. And if by some chance it's not, if they want to go a different direction and we get outvoted, we're not paying for the changeover.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great presentation, although it was missing Caprice, so minus one point for that. What is the name of the software system I missed at?
First Do.
What?
First Do.
Oh, First Do?
First is in first, number one, and Do is like on arrival, D U E.
Oh, I got it, okay.
Sorry.
It's okay.
That's wrong.
Do, hairdo or something, maybe it's just getting late. And so we've been using, just so I understand, we've been using IMC. It's not working for us, but it's really effective for the police side. So I'm missing the, the bridge of, we integrate this, what happens to IMC as it relates to police and dispatch?
So it won't have any effect on the police?
Okay.
We're still, as part of the cost savings that we're trying, that we're implementing is that this, the First Do will still use the CAD system from IMC. So there's a huge cost savings there. So the police side will be completely unaffected. I don't want to speak to whether or not IMC is effective for them or not.
Yeah.
For their operations, IMC will be untouched. They won't notice any difference.
Okay.
And then for us, we'll be pulling the computer-dated dispatch information. So like some of the mapping stuff, call time stuff, there'll be a bridge behind the scenes we won't see that'll take that data and move over into First Do for us.
Okay. And have Chief, have you, you and Chief Laurie have kind of reviewed this change? And he's good with this, because there is no impact?
I didn't talk to him at all. As zero to them, they won't notice.
Oh, really?
Anything. They won't notice anything.
Okay.
Solely for fire and EMS.
Okay.
It doesn't affect the dispatch, we are going to get three. Yeah, three components for dispatch.
Yep.
Very much a scaled-down version, I think, was in your packet. We're going to use it for personnel scheduling and all those two, just those two things because right now, we're doing this scheduled on paper.
Yep.
And maintaining the personnel, we're going to put it into the same system, so it's all, all together with the firefighters.
Okay.
So.
So just again, I'm not in your line of works.
So pretend like the dispatch center is the new place.
Yep, yep.
And here is police, and here is fire.
Yep.
So when the dispatcher takes stuff, puts it into the CAD, and they hit go, it crosses over a bridge.
Okay.
Goes into their IMC software.
Okay.
Or into our.
That's all I need, thank you.
It actually already goes into AmbuPro for ambulance and prison.
Okay. That, I just wasn't understanding how this was going to affect that IMC. Thank you, sounds great.
And the dispatch component's important because they do, in the event of scheduling issues and stuff like that, it kind of goes through the fire office. And so the more that they're aligned with us, the easier it is.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Okay. Ian?
Yeah, just kind of follow up on that. If, if the police department came and said they wanted to go to different software, does this vendor have a, or could this be used for the police or is it not? You mentioned that ambulance, they have a new one coming out that might be, something that could be rolled in. Nothing yet on the police side.
So there's nothing that I'm aware of. If you know differently, please speak up. But the only component that would call into question is we would have to make sure that whatever they transition to, we would have to secure our CAD component. So that would just be whether, whether it would fall underneath the First Do program or whatever potential program they went to down the road. But I would say that would probably be our only unknown variable during the agreement.
Okay.
Patrick? Yeah, having developed data centers in the past and understanding what cloud is about, I'm just curious. Well, first of all, to share with the board, 99.95 uptime is about four and a half hours of downtime a year, which is very good for this type of program. Have you, in your negotiations or discussions with, with the provider, talked about what maintenance schedules will be? This is an emergency system. It should be as available as possible, yet, you know, in a cloud environment, you could be subject to a variety of different maintenance issues that they may be required to do for a number of different other customers that are in that cloud environment. Is that something that you guys have been?
Yep, so on the high end, this has passed the Cullen test. Lieutenant Cullen is pretty particular as far as the programs that he uses and the processes that he does. So he's, he's already been in negotiations with them. It's a public safety software, like that's their heart and soul. So they're aware of the critical infrastructure that they're responsible for.
Okay. Good, I just want to make sure it meets the standards of what an emergency response center would need to be able to deal with the issues at any given time. Thank you.
Thank you, great presentation. A couple of quick questions. Does the vendor have, or are the planning modules beyond those you've described, such as fleet management, inventory, some of the other operational aspects of the department?
Yes. So that's one of the key components. Again, I was trying to stay brief. I probably brushed over a little too quickly. This is another awesome component that we're going to get as far as inventory, asset management, equipment tracking, preventative maintenance. It'll tie into our mechanics and being able to, instead of every time we come before you and say, this truck's, this truck's 40 years old and it's falling apart, it's time to replace it, we can actually just pull up the data directly from here as opposed to going to old handwritten cards and pull up all of that information. So it links that component in. It tracks all of our preventative maintenance on our safety equipment, SCBA's, ladders, all the critical.
Okay, great. And knowing that it's a cloud service and I trust Lieutenant Cullen, but how redundant is your connection to the internet? You're just looking at the prevalence of stronger storms, wind, rain, you know, trees down, you know, areas that were affected, you know, they, you know, they might have had two different connections to the internet, both of which were knocked out by storm damage, so.
Yeah.
Do you have that?
So we have, we have redundancy built in, and we have two different, two different providers right now. We have lost one once. We transitioned over to the other, but really, that's, that's what we have for backup. I mean, generally, our center has, we have dual servers that back up every, every other hour, so they toggle back and forth. We have UPS, we have a generator that runs for several days. What else? I mean, I don't know what else to tell you other than that. Redundancy for, for internet. We have, actually, we have two UPSs. We have one that the town, the town supports, and we have one that is smaller, that supports just Next Gen 911, that is supported by the Commonwealth. I think as far as being robust and having, having backup, I wonder what's the word I'm looking for here? Resilience, I guess. Yeah, we are, yeah, we have, we have a lot of, a lot of redundancy built into our system, a lot. Probably more than most, to be honest.
Okay, great, thank you. No further questions.
Kristi?
I just, I just wanted to point out, it's in the article information, but the, there's an annual recurring maintenance cost. I think, given what the deputy and the chief have told us this can do, that's probably a good deal. But I just know that we're going to see that, or you're all going to see that in the IT budget when it's coming up for FY '23. And so I just want to make sure that we're all understanding that that's going to be there.
IT budget as opposed to fire?
Yeah.
And do we see IMC under IT?
Yeah, I would, I believe so, yeah.
Okay, I just didn't recall.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I thought it would be.
You wouldn't see it as a separate, you'll see it as an increase. You don't see it as a separate line item.
Right, understood.
So our goal going forward is, well, initially, when we get up and running, you're going to see IMC, the fire portion of the IMC bill for the town go down. But then it's our other goal, we have e-dispatches and AmbuPro and I am responding and what else? Those are our other major ones. You're probably going to see at least two of those go away.
Understood.
Maybe three, probably two.
And Kristi, is this the type of thing that gets budgeted every year through town warrant? Or is it, is it?
It's going to budget.
It goes, I'll just write in the budget, okay?
Right, but the budget is, is on.
Is on the warrant.
I mean, you vote on the budget every year, yeah.
Last thing. We did, we did meet with IT Mark Stockman about this, and he, he looked into it and was supportive of this project.
Great, thank you.
Great.
Okay, so next, next on the budget is the continuation of our discussion on financial policies, which would be the comprehensive fiscal management policy component. Do we want to, I'm comfortable, given that there's no action required at this point, given the time, if we wanted to move that to the agenda on the 28th?
So this is actually going to come in front of you at the budget summit. We're going to just dive a little bit deeper because we've already presented to the finance committee generally and gotten some initial questions. We want the school committee to have a good understanding of it as well. So if you're comfortable with this really coming again at the budget summit, if you don't have any questions that you want answered right now, that's up to you.
I'll survey the board to see if we want to cover it or move forward tonight.
I can wait.
Okay, then we'll, we'll cover it with the other boards and committees at the budget summit later this month. Okay, moving forward is now our discussion of the Fall Town Meeting Warrant.
So obviously, you've heard from several departments tonight about their articles. I just wanted to go through some article, some of the articles that I don't currently have someone scheduled to come in to see if you're comfortable with them not coming in. So the first article is a DPW article. DPW will be here on the 28th, so all of the DPW articles will go through on the 28th. The Finance Department Budget Adjustment, which is for the procurement, I can answer those questions if you want to ask them now. If we want to talk about them on the 28th, I don't have a specific presentation coming to you. That is also true with the Insurance Budget related to free cash and OPEB. The School Department will be here on the 28th. Public Works again. Article six, the Conservation Department Budget. Sherry Wittis will come in if you're interested, but I think I can answer that question too. It's a $5,000 increase. It's really COVID restoration and a result of Day Pray and Zwicker being purchased. Police came in. The Recreation Department will be here to answer the questions about the three golf-related articles. Fire was just here. The tuition reimbursement.
I'm sorry, Recreation is coming in?
Yes, yep. The tuition reimbursement article, there's no specific presentation, but if there's questions, please let me know. The next couple are Public Works. The alcohol bylaw, we'll talk about that a little bit more on the 28th. I don't think there's a lot to talk about, but I just want to go over it with you. The Planning Board did Articles 18 and 19 today, and then we have a presentation for Article 20 on the 28th coming in. And then Article 21, the poultry bylaws back. Just for the public, that the Attorney General has to approve all of our articles or all of our bylaw changes before they become law. And there was one portion of that bylaw that they disapproved, which was the $500 fine because it exceeds the amount that's allowed under state law. And so, you know, we can sort of briefly talk about this, but I think that's pretty self-explanatory.
Please say forward it, yeah.
Yeah, please say forward. So as long as everyone's comfortable with, with sort of what we've laid out, so school, recreation, DPW, will all be here on the 28th and as well as the final zoning article.
Perfect.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so no questions on the other articles this evening? Okay. And moving forward, we have a number of requests for appointments. I'll cover them very quickly here. The following individuals have requested appointments to the following committee and boards. Their letters of interest are in our packet. We've had an opportunity to review them. Kate Groves has been recommended by the Youth Commission to be appointed as an adult member. The appointment fills the remaining open seat from a former adult member that did not seek reappointment in July. It is a three-year term. Warren Johnson has requested to be the tenant representative to the Westboro Housing Authority Board. This position is vacant due to a resignation of a former member. Mr. Johnson will fill the remainder of the five-year term. Jay Marshall Preston has requested, has requested appointment to the Veterans Advisory Board. This opening is due to a resignation of a member. Mr. Preston will fill the remainder of a one-year term. Hopefully, we've had a chance to read the letters.
I'd move to make a motion to appoint Kate Groves to the Youth Commission for a term ending June 30th, 2024. Warren Johnson as the tenant representative to the Westboro Housing Authority for a term ending June 30th, 2023. And Jay Marshall Preston to the Veterans Advisory Board for a term ending June 30th, 2022.
I'll second that.
Okay, move to second any questions or discussions, concerns? Seeing, hearing, seeing, hearing none, all in favor? By hand vote, 5-0, motion passes, five being present. Thank you very much. And I want to take a moment to thank these individuals for stepping forward to volunteer. As I said at the outset of the meeting, the town does depend on volunteers on our various boards and committees to help get the work done and serve the interests of our residents and the town as a whole. So thank you very much for volunteering. Next item on the agenda is the Central Mass Municipal Planning Organization, which is a component of the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission. And we received a request to designate a member of our board to participate in a CMNPO meeting on September 23rd. Kristi, do you want to fill in what this is about?
Yes. So the request was for the, at the meeting, there'll be a vote for a regional representative. And so they're asking that all select boards send one representative to vote. I believe it's a virtual meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, so you would participate. So it's at 5:00 on the 23rd.
Okay. And so just for the public, the CMNPO is one of the organizations that involved in the planning of Public Works and other projects in our region. It's a subcommittee of CMRPC, which is divided into different districts. Each district containing multiple towns elects a representative and an alternate to sit on that committee and do the work of that committee. And so I was contacted by Select Board Member Marshall about an interest in attending the meeting and potentially filling that role. And what you?
Yeah, so I have increasingly become interested in matters of transportation and sort of its interconnectivity to the many facets of our way of life here in Westboro. I've, in my past work as a board member, worked on the Via project and did some work there. I'm, as you know, I'm the liaison to the Act of Transportation Safety Committee and enjoying that work. I'm also a member of the Metro West 495 Partnership, and transportation is one element of what they do. So I think that the CMNPO will, if somehow chosen through this process, which is a little bit unclear to me, to be honest with you, and how they do it, because I've never sat in on their meeting, then I think that there's a compliment there. And I've also, anyway, so I'm interested, if anyone else is, you know, I'm too tired to arm wrestle, so.
Oh.
But I'm happy, you know, happy to do that and be a voice, not only for the West, for Westboro, but the region. And we've got big projects like the Alston-Brighton Project, you know, that we certainly need to be aware of what's going on, have attended meetings for that, so.
Okay. Then I will move to designate Shelby Marshall as the Select Board's CMNPO representative. I'll second.
Got it.
Or three?
Moved and seconded. Any further comment or discussion? Seeing none, we shall vote all in favor. The motion passes on a vote of 5-0, five being present.
Good luck.
Thank you, Shelby.
Thank you for stepping up.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, and we are getting close, is the approval of the meeting minutes from our meeting on August 24th, 2021.
Move the approval of the August 24th minutes as presented.
Second.
Any questions, comments, corrections, notations? Okay, seeing, hearing none. My notes are catching up. I'm going slow here. We'll vote to approve the minutes, all in favor. Minutes are approved on a vote of 5-0, five being present. Okay, and then.
Christie, are you going to let Kevin win? Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So now, Ian, if you may, if you would, motion to move into executive session?
Or at the issues and correspondence?
Oh, sorry. It's because it's not a believable thing on the left. So next is issues and correspondence. I'll start with Patrick. First of all, I'll just mention that this month is National Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month. I left a ribbon on each board member's place. I gave one to Sean earlier in the week. I encourage all to recognize this and just be aware of it and support it. If you are interested in learning more about it, you should contact the Department of Youth and Family Services. They have additional ribbons and additional information. The Senior Center, they're looking for tax preparers to help do tax preparation, and they have information up on their, up on the senior, the Council on Aging website for, if you're interested. They have a Breakfast with Trig Lurie on tomorrow, on the 15th, if you, excuse me, on the 15th this week. You need to register by tomorrow. The cost is $3. Also, I attended the School Committee meeting, and I'll just say that it sounds like the schools are off to a great start for the nearly 3,900 students in the district. And also that the Fails is on target for opening November 15th, and they are hoping to do some sort of virtual open house type event at some point to share the state-of-the-art design of the school. So that's great news. That's it. Thank you. Ian?
I have nothing this evening.
Shelby?
I do have a couple items, and I know we're running long here, so I'll try to make it quick. So the Hakamaka Pond Reuse Committee continues its work. We have a meeting tomorrow, and we finally received the operations manual from Beazer and EPA, and so that gives us a sense of who needs to do what in terms of maintaining the property and provides us with what I would call some pretty critical information to allow us to sort of move forward. And so I envision that work to really be kind of more officially getting underway now. So kind of exciting. And obviously, we heard a lot about Otis Street work, too. So nice to see all these pieces come together. The Community Preservation Act Exploratory Committee has had several presentations before various committees. Act of Transportation, FinCom, Conservation, I think, is the next one that's coming up. We're actually doing some educational outreach at the farmer's market to reach folks. We've got a new flyer, which I'll share with the board. And we are doing public meetings, hosting public meetings on September 29th and October 7th at 7:00 PM, and those will be on the town calendar. I want to, I asked Ian to do this, but he said he wouldn't, so I'll do it for him. So there's a time-honored tradition here in Westboro called the Good Scout Dinner, an award. Really proud that Ian and his wife Maureen have been, they are receiving that award this year. And for those of you that are not familiar with the award, it's awarded to individuals who demonstrate integrity and genuine care for others, both in their professional and personal lives. And want to congratulate you. That's, I know you give a lot of time and effort and really are very invested in scouting. And folks can go to Mayflower, bsa.org, or give Ian a call. He'll hook you up with some tickets. But that's on November 10th, and it's nice to see that event coming back after COVID. So encourage folks to go out and support that. I want to thank Alan and Chief Purcell for all of their work to organize and everyone else that was involved. A beautiful remembrance ceremony for 9/11. And last but not least, I want to thank my colleague, Patrick. We, he and I met under the direction of this board to talk about Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day and come up with a game plan. So we are proposing a late October or early November meeting. We're suggesting it be in person, but allow for hybrid participation for those that need or choose to participate that way. And as a general framework, and I know this is not an agenda item for discussion tonight, but I want to make sure folks understand the, we want to make sure that you understand the framework. We're proposing that the plan would be for about three minutes per person that wants to speak. They'd ideally register in advance with Seela to, you know, much like we do with open forum. Alan, you would be the moderator, because you're good at doing that. And there would be a potential for clarification time of questions with a speaker, so if the board wanted to engage and ask a clarifying question. So that's the framework we've proposed. If we're good to go with that, we can kind of land on a date. Great, we're good to go. But if we need further discussion as to structure, then I would propose that we have that at our next agenda on the 28th and kind of discuss that as a board.
Sean?
Thanks. Just a couple of quick things. EDC met last week. We did go through the candidates tonight. That was a large portion of the meeting, but we did also get an update on the LRRP, oh, LRP. And Zach has been working with Hagerty Consulting, and they're a couple of weeks away from sort of polishing up the recommendations, and hopefully we'll have something.
Remind us what that is?
Local Rapid Recovery Plan.
Thank you.
It is LRRP.
Thank you.
And they had, you know, maybe 10 suggestions that they were looking at, going to prioritize those and come with something before the EDC, and then I imagine eventually before this board as well at some point. So looking forward to that.
Okay, thank you. I also want to thank, first and foremost, Chief Purcell, who really did most of the heavy lifting with assistance from his deputy chief in organizing the 9/11 remembrance, and thank all those who participated and attended. I also want to, you know, thank Lydia Goblat, who sent a couple emails and texts, sort of reminding us in the midst of all our day-to-day activity and COVID response and our crowdfunding discussions, that this was out there and getting, and having us get the ball rolling. And thank the Houses of Worship for participating in the bell ringing, which have gotten feedback that it was noticed and very much appreciated as well. So thank everyone there. And that is all I have this evening. And so on that, I will entertain the motion now for executive session.
I'll move to enter into an executive session under Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, and under Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, 2187, to comply with or act under the authority of the Select Board to approve executive session minutes.
I declare that an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the board's bargaining and litigating position. The board will not be convening in open session following executive session.
Thank you.
Is there a second, is there a second for the motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, vote. I'll start to my right. Patrick?
Welch, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Marshall, yes.
Keo, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Westboro TV, for simulcast broadcasting, facilitating our remote participant this evening. Everyone, have a good evening.